Daryl, ready to start?
He knows I'm on.
We're on. All right. Good evening, everyone.
It's not on.
No?
Okay, now it isn't.
Now we're on. Well, we had a difference of opinion, but apparently we're on everywhere now. So, this is the Goss Town Planning Board. It is June 20...
Five.
Five, thank you.
Five.
All right, we're all in agreement on that. There you go, it was unanimous. Before we begin the meeting, because we're doing this meeting electronically and in person, I have some information to read in regards to write to know, because we can do this electronically due to the COVID-19 outbreak and emergency order number 12 from the Governor's Office pursuant to Executive Order 202004. There is public access to this meeting here at Town Hall. There is also public access by telephone, by video or other electronic means, and for telephone conferencing, you are able to dial 603-766-5646 and use participant code 785645, followed by the pound sign. The town has previously given notice of this ability to call in for accessing the meeting, and if anyone has a problem with telephone access, they are asked to call 603-660-5000. That will alert us that we're having a problem, and we will adjourn the meeting to a later date if in fact we learn that the public cannot have access to this meeting. All votes taken in this meeting will be done by roll call vote. That is a requirement of the law in regards to electronically conducted meetings. And so, we start by taking a roll call attendance. We do have members other than board members, we have people online, and when there is something that they wish to speak to, either if they are part of the presenting team or they wish to speak during public hearing, we ask that they dial *9. We have staff here operating what is essentially the control panel for access to this meeting, and *9 will alert her that you should be unmuted and so we can hear your comment. At this time, I will take roll call attendance. Tim?
Tim Redmond.
Karen?
Karen, you.
Jim?
This is Jim, and you're going to ask about who's here. My wife is somewhere in the house.
That's right. Karen, do you have a dog, husband, child there? We're supposed to ask.
I have all dogs, but none of them are in the opposite lane.
All right. Kimberly?
I'm here, and I am by myself.
Thank you. Peter?
Here's your chance to collect and rest by myself.
Phil?
Phil DeVazza, I'm by myself.
My name is Barbara Griffin, I'm here in the room. David?
David Pearson, alternate member.
And Gail?
Gail Abrek, alternate and recording secretary.
Staff present. Patty?
Patty, Gail.
And Sarah?
Sarah, right, and I am with a baby that is hopefully going to go to sleep.
All right, and you are here as our town engineer, right?
Yes, sorry.
Thank you, Sarah. All right. The first item of business on our agenda is, as was set forth on the agenda that was mailed to you, that would be action on the minutes of June 11th. Do I have a motion?
No move.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Phil, seconded by Peter. Is there any discussion or corrections?
Mr. Jim, I have a question on page eight.
Page eight?
In addition, number 12, it says possible adjustment of lot line where the garage is on the lot. I thought our condition was more specific. They worked through that, the satisfaction of the planning directive.
That is my recollection. Anybody else?
The lot line that was kind of weird shaped?
No, it was a lot line that essentially created a very large flag lot.
Yeah.
And they put the shed from the abutting unit on the two different lots.
Yes.
So he could still meet the size requirements that he wanted for the multifamily by swinging that lot line so that it basically intersected with the lot behind them.
Yeah, I thought it was, you kind of took a vote, and it was two thought it should change, and the rest didn't. Do you remember, Gail?
Yeah.
So I think, because you took like a vote on it whether it was an issue, and I believe it was you and Jim that felt the lot line should change.
And me.
And you.
But Jim's motion was to move it.
Okay, then.
Right, isn't that your recollection?
And I know it was to the satisfaction.
And it was to the satisfaction of the plan.
And the applicant had said he would work on it with Joanne because it was going to be to their satisfaction.
Right, so I think Jim's memory is correct.
All right, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. Anything else? All right, see?
I'm good.
All right, thank you. Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote on the minutes as amended with the deletion of that word. Tim?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you. The next item for us to consider would be request for continuance. You have seen in your packet an email requesting a continuance for two items that were on our agenda as new business. That would be for map five, lot 49-1, a two lot subdivision, and also a site plan for one of those lots pursuant to the subdivision 4911. They've requested to be moved to the July 23 meeting. Staff is recommending that the continuance require a butter notification at the applicant's expense. I would certainly expect that because I don't have a lot of confidence they're going to be able to make the July 23 meeting based on what's going on today. So, is there a motion?
I'm moving, Jim, I'm moving whatever you just said.
Okay. Is there a second to Jim moving whatever I just said?
I'll second it.
All right, we'll give that to Karen. Jim and Karen have moved that the applications, the two new items of new business will be continued to July 23 or such other date as the applicant can make after July 23 with a butter notification at their expense. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. Tim?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. The next item on our agenda is an item of old business. We do have a request for something to go out of order, but given the history of these applications, we're going to stick to the orders in the calendar. So the first application is a matter of old business. This is map five, lot 60. This is relieved from the outer 50 of the 100-foot wetland surface water conservation. I'm going to invite the applicant to come up to the table while we go through this. This is a site plan subdivision review application of Master of Crossing LLC. This is located on South Mass Street for a proposed 42-unit condominium development for 55 years and older that will be partially located in the outer 50 of the 100-foot wetland surface water conservation district buffer. The proposal is to build 19, is that the correct new number? 19 duplex unit buildings and one fourplex unit building? The property is own commercial industrial flex zone and is located in the WSWC District Overlay. This has been continued from the May 14, 2020 meeting. This is the property that people might be familiar with as being across the street from the Villa Augustina Building. Patty, you want to go through the history on this?
Yes, so the board had accepted this as complete on April 9, and they are proposing to build now 41 units versus the 42 units, and so 55-year and older community development. And we've had a few public hearings on this, and the board has, since the last meeting, the board did act on three of the waivers that were requested at that time. They were granted, and the fourth waiver which was denied is why it was asked for continuance to go back and redraw the layout of the plan, and they did remove one unit so to create access to that infiltration pond, so that waiver is no longer needed. And since then, also, all the legal documents have been reviewed by our town council, and there's an agreement as to what you received in your packet as amended. And pretty much, that is it. You still need to act on the surface water buffer, the waiver of the outer buffer.
And what was Conservation Commission's position on that?
They wanted to have the 100-foot buffer marked with the shields.
They didn't have an issue with the relief requested as far as the outer buffer, did they?
No, they did not. They just, they wanted the placement along the buffer so it doesn't get disturbance in there, and they wanted to make sure there's erosion control measures in place and best management practices followed. They recommended stormwater pollution control plan be put in place, and I believe that has been submitted. Also, any proposed changes to the drainage mitigation and the treating of the drainage trailer or the runoff, they recommended it because it provides, the mitigation provides a buffer that will help protect actually the water quality of a damn little Brooklyn Glen Lake.
All right, thank you. Sarah, have you had an opportunity to take a look at this? And are the recommendations that you've reviewed from planning consistent with your opinion on this project?
Yes.
Do you have any issues that you don't think are going to be able to be resolved and monitored in accordance with the permitting?
Nope, I think we're in good shape.
Okay. All right. Are there any other questions from board members before I ask the applicant to add what they might want to this? Okay, I'm not hearing, or I keep wanting to say seeing anything, but I just have to sort of say, in my mind, I don't envision anyone saying anything, so at this time, I'll turn the floor over to the applicant. Jennifer?
Good evening. Jennifer McCourt with McCourt Engineering Associates, and with me is Dan Mueller of Cronin.
Hassan Zelinski.
Thank you. And the applicant, Norris Severs, is also in the audience tonight, if you have any questions for him. But at the last meeting, as you stated, you did not allow the waiver for the access to the detention ponds, so I had to do some reworking of the units. We only lost one unit. We're down to 41, and it's basically building 10. I lost that unit there so that I could get the grass driveway over to the detention pond. I worked with DPW because all of these accesses to the detention ponds are going to be right next to the units, so we're going to be putting in a reinforced turf, for lack of a better word, so that it'll look like grass, act like grass, but the vehicles will be able to drive on it without rutting it up or making a mess. The other change that I made was to be able to access this detention pond here. There used to be a duplex off the end of here. We moved that over and changed it to match the type of units here and made a six-unit building. So this is where we lost the one unit. This, I just moved things around to get more access for the detention pond down in here. We rearranged the, some of the vegetation, but made sure that none of it was going to inhibit the stormwater from working properly because that was one of Sarah's concerns from the beginning. So we ended up with 10 duplex, one triplex, three fourplex, and one sixplex building in the end. So, and the proposed impact to the wetland buffer, as I had said before, has been reduced from when the Conservation Commission saw it, and it still stays the same as what it was from the last plan set that you saw. So we keep shifting things a little bit here and there, and I can shift things a little bit here and there and make things a little bit better, which is unusual. I have looked through the suggested conditions of approval from your planner, but I also handed out that I just got today, this afternoon, is a letter from RDEF's attorney stating that they don't have a problem with the sewer flow easement, but the applicant is out of the country right now, so they have to wait until he comes back so that we can finalize the details of it. Also, so with that, what I'd like to do is, I think it's, yeah, number 14 of your conditions is to request that you tie that to the certificate of occupancy for the Angel Point buildings because that's where the sewer easement is right here that we're talking about, for this line.
I have a difficulty hearing.
I'm sorry, it's for the...
Move the two microphones, just move the two microphones over to me, right there in the corner when you're up there, and then I can pick it up better.
Sure. Basically, where unit nine is for Angel Point, that's where the sewer is connecting in, so it's really just the sewer line from unit nine to the interceptor that would be affected by the easement. So I just want to make sure that we have enough time to be able to do this, but afford my client time to be able to go forward with other construction and just being able to get started.
So your proposal is to have it tied into a CO?
For the Angel Point sewer, yes. For those units using the Angel Point sewer.
So, is that what you're referring to, buildings nine through 21 as?
Yes.
Angel Point Lane?
Yes.
Well, we...
No, Angel Point Circle, sorry.
Circle.
Circle, has two outlets.
So, to be, so your proposal is that 14 would become that the easement, da-da-da, for the town sewer interceptor pipe shall be recorded by the applicant and provided to the, and a copy provided to the town prior to a CO issue for any unit on Angel Point Circle?
Yes, ma'am.
Tim?
So why, why do you need such a long period of time? Because you're going to have to have the roads built and paved and the buildings built so you can even get a CO for any one of them. So why would you need that much time to have an easement placed? It seemed like you'd have that, want that done long before you were ready to sell a unit, because if there was a problem with the easement, you couldn't sell the unit.
Well, because we can start on the other side and get that done and sell units there, number one. Number two, he is out of the country and with COVID-19, not real sure when he's going to be able to get back. We anticipate it's going to be sooner than later, but I just, you know, things have been so crazy lately, I just, and I'm an engineer, so I don't like to gamble, so I try to give as much time as possible to be able to get things done.
Thank you.
Any other questions from board members?
This is Jim. To be clear, she wants to make that a condition of perpetuity of occupancy, not building permit, so the construction will already have been done before the easement is established?
That's what she's asking.
Okay.
That's what they're asking. She's just looking at trying to deal with more lawyers on another easement and figures they're never going to get their act together on it, so.
I understand the reason for her request.
Thank you, Jim. All right, if there are no other questions from board members, I'm going to open the public hearing.
Barbara, I have a question.
Sure, Jim.
This is Jim, and I have a question of some of the documents that were provided that I can wait on, but as I understand the description of the, also, access to the drainage areas that's described as sufficient to support a pickup truck, and there's a question for Sarah is, don't we use heavier equipment than that to gain access?
Sarah, go ahead.
Yep, well, so the number one thing is that the applicant has stated that they will be doing the maintenance, so the hope is really that DPW will never have to bring their vehicles there. Then secondly, Eric reviewed the shop drawings for the Geo Mac that is proposed, and it seems like it will be sufficient for the vehicles that we would bring. We won't be able to bring a huge dump truck, but we wouldn't bring a huge dump truck to do that kind of maintenance anyway.
The reason I ask, and I'm going to object to the form of the documents that have been proposed, is if you look at the easement agreements, they impose on us a duty, among others, to restore. If we have to go in, and if they're building a road that's questionable on whether it would support our equipment in the first place, that is going to make it difficult for us to go in. And the fact that they say they're going to do the maintenance, we dealt with that last time. The whole purpose of this is if they do not, we need a way to deal with it. That's the purpose of this, and I think we're pretty emphatic on that point, so we may never need to do it, and that's great, but if we do, we need to be able to get in, and the government should maintain our equipment, and I don't want any obligation to restore something that they were supposed to have taken care of.
So, I actually submitted a comment that I was a little bit nervous about that part gaining the drainage maintenance agreement because we're not requiring full-time inspection on this site, so, I mean, if our truck damaged something because it wasn't built correctly, I don't think the town should be responsible for repairing it. So I actually had that comment on the drainage maintenance agreement.
Barbara, do you want me to stay anymore at this point, or do you want to let it run and I'll come back to it?
Well, I, you know, let's let it run. I'm looking at this, and I'm not sure I'm finding the particular language in the documents because I like to leave it to be something, if we can, to be resolved, if not by word tonight, but as to intent, so we'll move on and then we'll come, keep...
Let me just finish my thought. These are supposedly reviewed by our town council. I only accept them, and I'm not going to approve it until I see a final version.
Okay, so I need to know specifically what document you're looking at and what language you're objecting to.
You want me to tell you now?
Yeah, tell me, why don't you tell me now?
Okay, first of all, on the drainage maintenance agreement.
Okay, I'm looking at it.
And this is the one that we were concerned about, that Sarah was talking about. We have some of the usual wording, and then they put in that at the end of the paragraph on page two, towns often should be liable for all claims of injuries of a person or terror. Two things. One, town has harbor immunity on many actions. With that clause, we have just waived it. Second, my question is, are we insured for that? Has IMAX reviewed this document? Because you are creating a liability for the child that does not, otherwise, and may not enjoy his house. And I don't think this is pure than our standard documents, and if it does, it should not.
It should not.
Now, tell me again, this is reviewed by our town council?
That's what I have been told.
And I'm saying nothing further. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, if you want to go on, though, you have a roll. The, it's the other document, the easement B. If you look at that, this is, I don't know what this, you go to page two, we're the grantee, the paragraph B at the top of page two, says the grantee, us, shall promptly repair, regrade, or restore any person or some of the easement area in the burden. promptly repair, regrade, or restore any person or some of the easement area to burden a, 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 active or exercise in the right to raise your own." Especially the same condition that exists prior to the commencement of any work. That's not the usual standard on a town easement, because again, we're not doing something we wanted to do, or something we have to do. The normal standard is we will stabilize, replant, but not restore. These put a lot of burden on the town. We should not accept them.
Okay. Thank you for looking at them. All right, do you have anything else in the documents? Because I'm gonna pull those out.
Not yet, but I'll keep working on it.
Okay.
Eric and I did have a few comments on the drainage maintenance agreement, but at the same time that we were submitting our comments, it was being reviewed by the town attorney, so we kind of thought that our comments should take a backseat, that the town attorney were, had like the final say, I guess.
I would expect, Sarah, that you would still provide the comments.
Barbara, may I make a comment? Never let the lawyers drive the bus.
Right, which is why I said to Sarah, if you've got comments, they still need to come in.
I submitted them to Joanne, but I'm looking at the staff report, and she did not include them. They were...
Okay, okay, but we've all been, all right, we've all been through the staff report, and we've all, and actually, there was a meeting earlier today, because Joanne is not able to be here tonight, where we all, we went through this. So in the future, if there are comments that are made and the planning director has not including them, there needs to be a discussion as to why not. And I suspect it was because by the time we had the meeting, the lawyer had responded.
Right.
And Jim has now pointed out that there are a couple of things that are not normally in our documents that will need to be taken care of. I mean, at least that's my consensus based on hearing the discussion. All right, are there any other questions or comments from board members before I open it up for the public hearing? Patty?
Prior to the meeting, Joanne had asked, asked me to add to note the recommended condition number seven, but now I'm wondering if, if that's what Jen was referring to on condition number 14. She had said for the ever source, the issue with that easement to be made, add to, apply to the issuance of a CO. Did you request that, Jen, or was she mixing up, and it was actually condition number 14 that you were...
It was condition 14 that was not the ever source easement.
All right, so then I'll cross that out.
Where's that, where's the word CO in number seven?
It wasn't. She had said to me that, can you add this to condition number seven and just let the board know? And I think she mixed up, because Jen's talking about 14.
Yes.
And so I was just clarifying to make sure there wasn't two of them.
We're gonna talk more about the sewer easement document before we're done tonight, so we'll let go of them.
Okay.
That was it.
All right, any other questions or comments before I open this up for public hearing? Seeing none at this time, I'm opening the public hearing. This is in regards to the map five, lot 60, application for a proposed 42-unit condominium development for 55 and older. Do we have any members of the public that would like to speak at this time? I'm gonna turn around in the room, because we've changed the setup. Is there anybody here for this application that wants to speak? Okay, is there anybody online, Patty?
There is only one of us are online for this, this application.
Have they pressed star nine? Would they like to speak?
Mr. Lanson.
If you want to speak, Mr. Lanson, hit star nine. Nope? Okay.
Nope, yep, wait a minute, let me unmute him. It just takes a minute for... Okay, you're unmuted.
Hi, good evening, sir.
I didn't really have much to add, we were just paying attention to see what was happening.
Chakil, do you have his name?
Just his last name.
My name is Jeremiah Langton.
Thank you.
All right, I thought I said it, but...
Well, there's a delay when we're muting and unmuting people, so we sometimes miss things, so thank you.
So just following along, see what was happening. My boss is out of the country, so not able to participate in the meeting.
Okay.
So that's all I really had was...
So you're, you're from RDF Corporation, and you're listening in to just follow what's going on?
Yes, because we're, we said about, we have the sewer line going under, we wanna make sure we know what's going on with that.
All right, so we sort of already discussed that, so hopefully you followed along with that.
Yes.
Okay, great. Do you have any other comments you'd like to give us here tonight?
I don't.
All right, well, thank you very much for calling in. All right, at this, if, if there's nobody else, Patty?
Nope.
At this time, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Board members, we have had a couple of issues in regards to documentation. I, I would like to deal with, before we have further discussion, the setback from the surface water buffer, the Water Conservation District. That, that has been in front of us for each meeting, and will need to be addressed before any further motion on this plan. Conservation did not have an issue with it, and my recollection is, is that there was some changing of the plans from the initial presentation, and Conservation actually liked what was done with the change. So board members, what's your position on the request for relief? Nobody has a position?
I'm fine.
All right, do I have a motion to grant the requested relief from the outer 50 of the 100-foot wetland surface water conservation district?
Some will.
Tim?
Barbara, I'll make that motion.
Phil, excuse me, Peter's made the motion. I'm gonna give the second to Tim, who was nodding his head here in the room. Is there any further discussion?
Barbara, I have a question.
Yep.
The, the, because I'm, excuse me, this page probably, the operation commission had certain, I guess, conditions to their approval or acquiescence. Are those conditions baked into this application now?
Yes, their, their condition was on...
Nine, 10, 11.
They're in the conditions, Jim, the...
Okay.
Erosion control, the marking of the buffer, drainage mitigation.
And she's noted it on the plans.
All right, so I have a motion that's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'm gonna call for the roll. Tim?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Peter?
Yeah.
Phil?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, so the relief from the outer 50 has been granted. All right, now we're on to the conditions, the status of the application and recommended conditions. We've talked about a couple of documents where Jim has pointed out in regards to the drainage maintenance agreement and the easement deed, that he's got issues and will not approve. Tim, I heard you mention something about sewer.
Yeah, we, I have, still have an issue with allowing the applicant to tie the certificate of occupancy for the first building to the recording of the sewer deed. First of all, the villa is on that line presently, and the villa, if that villa becomes active before this project is built, the villa still has to be able to have their sewer work, and the sewer crosses that property presently. And it will have to be active so that the villa can operate in the event that that place gets sold prior to the completion of this project. Therefore, the sewer has to be built before they build the road or before they build the first house. And you're certainly not gonna build a sewer in an area that you don't have an easement deed recorded for, because if there's a problem with the easement, then the sewer is gonna have to be moved. So in my opinion, the sewer, recording of the easement for the sewer has to be done long before the, the issuance of any COs. It should probably be done before any building permits are even issued on that site, but that's just my opinion.
All right, and when you're speaking about the site, just for clarification, are you looking at the entire site, or are you looking at the Angel Point Circle?
I'm looking at the Angel Point portion of the project. I have no problem with starting the other area there on the right side of the program there, but the Angel Point section, the sewer easement has to be recorded long before the issue of the first CO on any of those.
And in that regard, you're talking about condition 14?
Yes, condition 14, request to tie that recording of the deed, of the easement to the first CO of the first building.
Okay, thank you. I mean, the applicant is asked to speak to it, and I'm gonna recognize the applicant.
We're more than happy to move that to, instead of the first CO to the first building permit, that's fine.
So prior to issuance of any building, of prior to the first building permit for that section.
For Angel Point Circle.
For Angel Point Circle, yes. More than happy to do that.
Okay, they've agreed to that.
Thank you.
Barbara, will that be on, a condition on the plan then? If it's a recorded plan, we gotta give notice of that to the, to the purchaser.
Is there a note on the, there's a note on the easement, isn't there, on the plan?
There will, as part of state law, I have to put all conditions on the plan, so before you sign it and before it's recorded, all conditions that you guys approved tonight will be placed on the plan.
Will the easement be marked on the plan in addition to the condition?
It's not a, it's...
I mean, the issue is, there's not an easement there now, right? It's a...
Right, but it's a flowage easement going through the property, and there's, it's not a meets and bearing easement.
It still get recorded, though.
The easement itself will, but I'm not gonna put the full language of the easement on the plan. What I will do is, I will put the book and page number of the, of the easement on the plan, and the condition from the planning board that that has to be signed. Well, I won't have the book and page of the easement on the plan before it's recorded, because that's not gonna be done.
But when I say, in addition to the note...
Mm-hmm.
On the plan...
Yeah.
Not on one of the sheets, you can note where the easement is.
Within the note itself, yes, I can, you're talking about, like, somehow highlighting it.
You know what I'm talking about.
I think what you're asking is, can you mark where the sewer line is and say, see...
Conditions.
Whatever, see whatever condition, see sewer and flowage easement recorded here with, or something like that. That's what you're looking for.
And I understand the condition needs to be listed, but the condition, it might be on a page that, just so people are aware when they look at that page, that that's where it is.
It will be on the utility plan, with the, a utility plan that would not be recorded.
Okay.
But I, what I can do is, on the recorded plan, state, you know, there is a sewer easement from sewer manhole nine to whatever the interceptor sewer manhole is. I can at nauseam make sure that it's clear as well, that there's a sewer easement there.
Tim?
So are you also gonna make sure that the Villa Augustina property is hooked up to the sewer, to the interceptor, as it presently is during all the construction of this project? Or are they gonna be disconnected at some point?
No, well, there will be a point for a short period of time when the connections are made from one part to another, where they will be disconnected, and that will be part of the easement that we have to, or part of the agreement, it won't be part of the easement, that we have to work with them. I mean, that's, that's something that is a physical challenge that we, it has to happen to be able to do this.
Were you able to review their system on the other side of the road and get information on it?
No, they do not have any of that information.
Well, I can tell you from past experience that they have a forced main that pumps from a, I believe, something like a 5,000 gallon tank. And when the pump goes on, you don't put your finger in the dike over there. So you're gonna have to have a contingency or at least conversation with them, so that you don't end up with a dosing in the middle of...
Absolutely.
Connection.
That's standard construction practices.
But you're telling us you don't have any information at this time, you would need to get that before the contractor begins that work.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, other board members?
Barbara, this is Jim. There's a certain fuzziness to this process. Are we creating a, sort of a dispute between negotiated property on RDF and the, the author of this project, that we are either gonna have to referee or be bystanders on? Or do we care?
I think we're a bystander. It's a condition, and we're a bystander. They have to work it out, and if they don't, we don't end up with all the conditions met.
Okay.
And I think that's what RDM is expecting based, and I think that, is it RDM? RDF is expecting, and based on the letter we got today from their attorney, who is familiar to us, and I'm quite confident has the ability to work out terms to her client's benefit, you know, I would expect that they're gonna work it out. But we're not gonna get involved in it, but it's gonna have to get worked out. And, and they've agreed that it has to get worked out before any building permit for that entire portion of the development.
That's okay, we don't wanna be in that discussion, we just wanna make sure it's not.
Yeah, that's all. We want notice that it's completed, not what the status is. Okay. Other comments? Tim?
So another condition that was voluntarily suggested by the applicant was regarding the school impact fee waiver that we granted, and haven't seen any mention of it anywhere in the conditions, that it was to be a percentage of over 55 and no one under the age of 40. I haven't seen that anywhere in our writing here. Does that need to be a condition of approval?
No, we changed it.
Changed what?
Let me recognize the attorney, thank you.
We put, that's on the condo docs that have been reviewed and approved.
So it doesn't have to be in our conditions of approval?
I wouldn't think so, because you require us to provide you with the condo docs to show that there is a covenant running for at least 20 years to that effect.
Good, I just wanna make sure it was stated somewhere.
Right.
Thank you.
Barbara?
Jim?
I've been picking up on that theme. Condo docs, they amended, and so I think, I think we do want it in approval, so that if they do amend the condominium dark, we consider you a violation of your approval. It would not normally apply towards amendments to...
The condo docs.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Counsel?
Just to respond, if you look at the condo docs that had been reviewed by town council and approved, we cannot amend the age restriction without consent from the Town of Goffstown. In addition, it has to stay on record for at least 20 years per your regulations, and that language was also added in.
Yeah, where that is?
The age, the age restriction and the obligation to maintain the drainage improvements were the two provisions that the condo docs specifically give the Town of Goffstown a say-in and prevent the usual amendment without consent from the Town of Goffstown.
Can one of your councils point out to where that appears in the condo dark?
Give me a moment.
He's gonna look.
Okay, I see.
Okay.
On the page 16, across page 17, okay? I see it, article nine.
In regard to the amendment of the condo instruments. Okay.
What if condominium were, were, I thought it dissolved, thought went away, it turned into a rental property? I still think it should be in our approval. I can think of situations where these don't have any effect. I'm conservative on that, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't make a note of that in approval.
Well, what would you have the note say?
That it shall be null, whatever the agreement was.
Well, I guess, is the, the point to be made as to amendment of the condo docs or the age restriction?
The condo docs, they can be, a condominium can be dissolved.
Well, that would certainly be an amendment.
Now, is it? It doesn't say, on the top, on the top of 17, it says, "May not be amended or terminated without, with express written consent of the Town of Goffstown," so they technically, they could terminate the condos without our permission. Statutory procedure of a termination does not require town approval, so if you're willing to take that, I don't care, but it's, I can... Well, statutory procedure of a termination does not require a town approval. So if you're willing to take that, I don't care, but I can, I can afford a lawyer to figure that out in about ten minutes. No, three minutes.
What are you figuring out?
The dissolution process under a condominium is always not shown in the law of the town. And if they do it according to the statute, they have the authority to stop them. I don't want to interrupt that, but it's only a question that maybe our town council can address. But if there's any question on that, I'd want it in our conditions of approval.
All right. Let me, the applicant has raised their hand. Yes.
And maybe, maybe they can satisfy our, like, current.
In the interest of moving this along, we do not have an objection if you want a condition of approval to say that this development will be essentially subject to the age restriction currently put forth in the condominium declaration that has been provided to the board. So it's a condition of approval beyond just being in the condo doc.
The age restriction as approved
Stated.
by the planning board on... Okay.
Hey, Barbara, this is Karen. I just was hoping to, have never repeated. I just want to make sure I understand it.
Counsel, you want to repeat what you're willing to put in as an additional condition?
We're willing to put in as additional condition. If you look at page eight of the declaration that was provided, occupant page housing covenants, we are essentially willing to agree as a condition of approval that the board is approving this development, whether it's a condominium or not, to have the occupancy limitations set forth in that section H. So it's a separate condition of approval above and beyond the condominium document. So if Mr. Raymond's example had somehow got terminated, it would still be a condition of approval that the development would have to be fifty-five plus per the language here.
Because it would be a condition on the plan.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I have another condition. Patty. This is easy, only because I just noticed it wasn't picked up. Recommending that, like to add for twenty-one then, is that the street name be reviewed and approved by the fire department for nine-one-one purposes and by the board, the select board because they have to approve the street names and usually it gets circulated. If it's too close to another name, they won't recommend it. Since you have it on the plan, just make sure. Jennifer?
Before I put them on the plan, I had the fire department circulate it and approve it. I do not know if it went to the select, but I'm not.
Yeah, it has to go. I have not been submitted a street name.
All right, so that process still has to be completed, which is fine.
And they usually go by what they recommend because it's all about nine-one-one for urgency.
Right, right. But yeah, before I did that, I did reach out to the fire department to make sure I had, I didn't want to have to redo all that.
Okay. Board members, any other areas of questions or comments?
However, I, I just want to make sure we've covered the, my concern with the easement and the drainage maintenance. And by the way, while you were talking, I looked at the termination statute, it was sixty-three-four and it confirms my concern. So I think this solution proposed is appropriate but needed. But I, I don't know what you wanted to start on the easement cover there.
I want to come back to that. I want to know whether there are any other issues for the board on this project. I am looking at a number of conditions of approval that have been recommended by the planning board, I mean, by the planning department. We have approved the waiver for the outer fifty. So if I'm looking, I have a number of conditions that are somewhat standard. They have agreed to do things with the rail trail that I know David has been involved in, so thank you. The sewer accessibility fee will have to be addressed. What I have is fourteen as an easement for lot five dash sixty-one. The applicant has agreed that that will also be complete, shall be recorded with the copy provided to the town prior to a building permit for any unit on Angel Point Circle or whatever name it is finally approved by the board of selectmen. Number fifteen in regards to the Goffstown Sewer Commission approval required. It is unclear whether that is the sewer department or the commission. So one suggestion is to have that comment be Goffstown Sewer approval required, letter to be submitted, a letter being submitted is standard practice. We have talked about adding number twenty, that this development will be subject to the age restriction as provided in the condo docs, section H. I know that Gail has got the wording that we previously talked about and Patty has suggested twenty-one that the street names will be approved by the fire department and submitted to the board of selectmen for final approval. And then we have the issues that Jim brought up in regards to the two easement documents. Are there any other comments on this application or questions or concerns of board members? Because I'm trying to narrow down what we're going to talk about. All right, I'm not hearing anything. I'm not seeing anything from board members here in the room with me. So what we have are issues that have been raised in regards to the drainage maintenance agreement and the easement deed in regards to not the apparent, the literal assumption of duty by the town in regards to an affirmative obligation in regards to restoration and repair of the drainage areas. Jennifer?
I would just like to say to the board is that, you know, between the last two, between the last planning board meeting and this planning board meeting, we've been working very diligently with staff trying to come up with appropriate language for everything so that, you know, we could get a conditional approval here. And I, you know, it's and I heard Mr. Raymond say that he, you know, would not approve it without seeing a final document, which means that we would have to come back. I really think that I would request from the board, if there's any way that we can do it so we don't have to come back, we'd really appreciate it over this issue. The concern is, from just a practical standpoint, is that this, the detention ponds will be permitted through alteration of terrain and during construction they'll have an EPA construction permit for storm water control. If it's more the AOT permit, if the town goes in and does work on these ponds and they don't fix it, their work is not in concert with the AOT permit, who then is liable for that? And, and that's, you know, our concern. We're hoping that, you know, you guys never have to come on here, obviously. That's everybody's hope. But if you do, how does, you know, if you do something that is not in, that actually harms the water quality instead of treating it, that's our big concern and is, you know, to, if you have to, you had said stabilize, not restore. I get that. At least it's stabilized so that you don't have, you know, erosion. But it's, you know, these ponds are going to be constructed in a certain way to meet AOT and water quality standards. And they need to be stabilized. We use the word to restore to make sure that they still function in that manner.
I, well, I, I went through all of the conditions that we have absent these two because I appreciate what this applicant has done since the last time we were here and we denied a waiver request and you simply went and took care of it. And I am very appreciative of that, of being on this board for a number of years. I, I want to thank you for that because it made everything else much easier. However, you are managing to find yourself in the midst of all sorts of unusual circumstances with this application that you have no control over, which include the fact that we got new legal counsel in the middle of this. And so we have a legal counsel that approved provisions in two documents that it has been pointed out have not been in our documents previously. And I think a board member has raised a legitimate concern about creating liability for our community where none statutorily even exists. I recall you telling us that we're never going to have to do anything because these are grass and it's a condo and everybody's going to take care of it. So hopefully we're all discussing something that's not going to occur. But I think there is an issue with the language as proposed. And I apologize to board members because I did not look at it. I, I have to admit, I skimmed these and I trust for my member Jim Raymond to look at these and for town council. So I think Jim has valid points. I would like to try to come up with a way to resolve this without necessarily needing the applicant to come back to a full meeting, notice the butters and go through this. But maybe, I don't quite know how to do that. I see the applicant has their hand up. I'm going to ask, I'm going to address, allow them to address the board now.
Just like to speak quickly to the two issues that were raised. The restoration, if you damage or disturb property and using an easement, in all honesty, in the municipalities, it has been standard language, even with easements to municipalities. I, I think its suggestion has been made that you're creating new liability. However, this is essentially a property right that the town is getting. And all easements, and this applies to municipalities as well, are subject to the rule of reason. Which means because you're not, this isn't your property, you're using somebody else's property. There is a case out of Laconia, the name escapes me at the moment, but involves a right of way where people were damaging the property through the use of the right of way. And yes, that person ended up being liable. That's part and parcel of what comes with an easement. You have to use it in a reasonable manner and if you go above and beyond that, you can be held liable. In terms of the drainage maintenance agreement, the language in there, frankly, from my perspective, simply restates what the law is. Sovereign immunity technically deals with the state. There is municipal or limitations on municipal liability in the state. However, that usually deals with discretionary decisions. It doesn't deal with ministerial acts, which is what we're talking about here. And the only thing that it does, it says, if you're negligent, if you act in a negligent manner, then you can be liable. That's, as far as I'm concerned, is what the law says. And even if that weren't in there, because the law of the state also provides for written agreements that the law is essentially implied, you will get to the same point.
I will note that the attorney said he was going to speak briefly. I'm just smiling. As Ms. McCourt wanted a long time for this.
No, I, as Ms. McCourt, we're looking to get this done tonight and
I know you are, but I'm not hearing any, any move to how we might resolve this. I'm hearing
I guess the question is, I mean, I can speak to my client briefly if, whether he wants it out or not and just essentially punt the issue down the road. You guys may, if this board may think, or your town council may think that there's no liability issues and if the rule of reason says that you would have to do that, we can take it out and leave the issue for down the road.
Sarah, let me ask you.
Ms. Chairman, my, can I just interrupt? My client just told me we'll take it out. We'll just take it out and be done with it.
Jim, we, the applicant has stated that as to the drainage maintenance agreement, the, the sentence on the second page in regards to the town of Goffstown shall be liable will be removed and that paragraph B on
Okay, I have a question on that, though. The preceding sentence as well. We're not normally, so I understand they're concerned.
All right, I understand that they're going to say, okay. So the last two sentences of that paragraph, I had only marked off the last one, but the last two sentences of the second paragraph of the drainage maintenance agreement will be removed. And Gail is getting this. And paragraph B of the easement deed shall be removed. And the applicant has agreed to that. And I will have a discussion with our planning director in regards to review of documents in our town council.
They have a thing on the easement deed. It doesn't give any warranty of title and typically we want that. We want to make sure that we're not, our reason is not subject to any prior mortgage so that when we get this property right, we can exercise it.
Yes, that's fine.
That's fine. Well, the language in our standard maintenance agreement, to the extent it exists for that, we will put it in and they agree.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
I want another question, comment.
Sarah.
I'm bringing this up because I really just thought that like, you know, if the, if our town attorney didn't find an issue with that, then
Sarah, what your, what is your comment?
On page one, towards the bottom of the page, second last sentence where they are given a reasonable opportunity to remedy the violation. I just thought that maybe reasonable opportunity should be defined, a specific number of days should be specified in there.
I would think that that would be very unusual.
Okay.
Jim, do you have another position on that?
No, I'm, I'm good with it. I, what's reasonable can vary. We don't have a right to act unreasonably. And if it's harm to the public of Appleworth, Leanne, it would be hard for us not to have a reason to act quickly if we press them. I, I can live with that.
All right, thank you. Okay. So we have twenty-one conditions. We also have an agreement, twenty-two and twenty-three would be the revisions to the two easement, to the easement deed and the drainage maintenance agreement as we've discussed. Are there any other issues for board members? Gail, do you think you have the twenty-three conditions?
Yeah, I will have them.
You have, you've got them?
Yeah, I've got, I've got enough notes to be able to put it together.
Okay. All right. So do any board members have any further comments on this application? I'm not seeing any. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve with the suggested conditions of approval, one through twenty-three, with twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-three being added this evening. And number fourteen being amended to state that the sewer easement recording will be tied to the first building permit on the Angel Point or Angel Circle side of the project only.
And a letter will be submitted from the sewer.
Do you need to have the description of twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-three for the record?
No, I think we've got it.
Well, twenty, you're good?
Yeah.
I'll second Tim's motion.
Peter has seconded it. Is there any further discussion?
A question. What's number nineteen? I don't, I only go up to eighteen on this. I'm looking at.
Prior to the signing of the plan, all engineering of new fees must be paid.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anything further from board members? All right, I have a motion that's been seconded. I'm going to call for the vote. Tim?
Yes.
Karen?
Yeah.
Jim?
Yeah.
Kimberly?
Yeah.
Peter?
Yeah.
Phil?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next item on our agenda tonight is a matter of new business. This is map eighteen, lots thirty and thirty-two. This is the completeness review, site plan amendment review hearing for, for a proposal to add a towing business, Jorker Towing LLC to an existing commercial property that currently has an automotive repair, collision repair business and an automotive sales business currently located at, currently located on it. The owner is KCK Enterprises LLC. And Jorker Towing LLC is the applicant. This is located at five seventy-eight Mast Road. It is zoned commercial. There are some waivers requested. Patty, why don't you Patty, why don't you take us through what this application is?
Okay, well, there is an existing auto repair business on it. Previously, in the location where they're proposing the towing business was an automotive sales business, which has now vacated the property. Prior to that, it was Landscape Plus, not Landscape Plus, Rock Solid Landscaping occupied the site. So now they're coming in, asking, they have a new tenant that would like to do a towing business in the rear of the property using where the auto sales was being located. Years ago, this property did have a towing business on the site, I just want, looking at the history and some of the file, it did have it at one time, and some, at some point that had, that use had left the property. This property is zoned commercial, it's involving two lots. Lot 32 at one point was zoned residential too, and at some point it got rezoned to be in commercial. So it falls in line with the permitted uses on the site. And they are asking for two waivers. We did talk today where we kind of made some suggestion on the second waiver with the landscaping.
All right, I apologize, Patty, before we get into the substance of that stuff.
Okay.
Let me make sure we've gone an overview of what it is. Is this application complete?
Yes.
And does it have any regional impact?
No.
All right, so is it the planning department recommendation that this application is complete, no regional impact, and ready for review?
Yes, as long as you accept the wa, grant the waivers for accepted purposes.
Acceptance purposes only?
Yes.
All right. And those two waivers were in regards to the curb cut and landscaping. Do I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Tim has moved it, is there a second?
Oh, my goodness.
Thank you, Karen. Is there any further discussion? I'm going to call for a vote. Tim?
Yes.
Karen?
Yeah.
Jim?
Yeah.
Kimberly?
Yeah.
Peter?
Yeah.
Phil?
Yes.
I vote yes, all right. Okay. So there are two waivers.
Any question about the waivers, ma'am chair?
Tim?
So my question about the waivers is, is when does not following a prior plan, site plan which was required, turn into a waiver for a new site plan? To me, seems to me it should have been an amended site plan for the site plan that they were not completed on, instead of being brought into us as waivers.
Well, can I answer? I think it's because the applicant filled out the waiver request form. It really probably shouldn't be asked for waiver except for, to be allowed as part of an amendment to the approved site plan, to not require that curb cut that was placed on it back when it was rock solid. They never, they hadn't changed it, and it was a, it was discussed with Brian Rose back in 2011, and he brought it to the board at that time. They said they wanted to see it as a site plan amendment, and they hadn't come in. So now they're coming in with a site plan amendment for this business, along with asking to keep the curb cut like it is. DPW has reviewed it as well, and Sarah can speak to that, about that, but staff is recommending allow that amendment be made to the site plan.
So they're not actually waivers then?
That one is not, but the landscaping is.
Right, and I think what happened is the applicant, it, it sounds like, from what I understand, the applicant came in with it as it was approved, and then when it was discovered that it wasn't really what was going on and they didn't want it, they took it out. So the plan you have is the existing condition, right?
Correct. So we're still back to the fact that we had a prior applicant that did not follow the conditions of approval, ran their business, went out of business, it's changed again, and other businesses gone into the same site with staff approval, and now we have a new applicant that's coming in, and they want to ask for a waiver for a condition that was part of a prior plan. I don't understand why we're calling them waivers.
I think it was carried through by what was filled on the application, like I say, it wasn't the engineer that filled out the application, it was the, the person that was applying, and I think because they filled it out, Joanne had carried it through as part of a waiver request, what it should be is asking for an amendment to the previous site plan approval.
So is that how we're going to treat it, as a request to amend the site plan and not as waivers then?
I think it probably makes more sense. Mike, what do you think? I'm going to, I'm going to ask the applicant, Mike Dahlberg is here. Mike, you want to say your name for the record and tell you what, let's just deal with this curb cut issue because it's a little confusing.
Mike Dahlberg, I'm the landscier that prepared these plans. My history with this property goes back to July of 1989. Did a boundary survey for Mr. Paris, the current owner's father. And then that, I think this is the fourth iteration of a site plan on the site that I've been involved with. There was a certain amount of landscaping that was required on Poteen Street 10, 12, 14 years ago, I think. And I believe a lot of that landscaping was installed, but because of plowing, snow, and people parking their cars to get into the Dunkin' Donuts, a lot of it was ruined. And I believe they've replanted a certain number of shrubs in the area along Poteen Street at the corner of Poteen and Mast Road. I don't exactly know how many of those are still alive, but if we need to plant some, some additional plantings per the staff, that's fine. I don't think it's, I don't think we're asking for a waiver of landscaping. If we need to amend it, like we've done in other site plans, then, then we'll do that. And the waiver...
Hold on, Karen?
It's a little bit hard to hear him.
I wonder, just take the two microphones and... Excellent.
Father, could, could, somebody turn the volume up? I can hear you fine, but every, Patty, I have difficulty hearing, it's very difficult to hear.
I can tell you that these aren't going to go to you guys because you're going all through the telephone. So if you want, I can put the phone in the middle?
Yeah, what, how? This go, yeah, the mics go to the live stream, the speaker goes to everyone on the phone. Who's crawling under the table? Hold on, we're moving the phone. That one. Thank you, David.
And now it's in the middle of the room. Can you hear me better, Phil?
Yes.
Okay.
I think the whole issue with waivers, it was, it's, it's not a correct request. Should, it should be part of the amended site plan. Landscaping speaks for itself. The access, the two access points on Mast Road, those access points were designed by NHDOT when they revamped, rebuilt Mast Road, and there was a taking, a condemnation and a taking along the entire front edge of the property. And there were no restrictions in that condemnation for access. In fact, the state designed those two openings to be the width that you see today. And I have, I have copies of the plans from the early 80s.
Well, let me just stop because Phil is a member of the board, and Phil was pretty active in that quarter of work. Phil, do you recall that or not?
The portion that I worked on, there only went up to Rochambeau.
Oh, all right, okay.
But because this, this site was truly a mixed-use site back in the 70s and 80s, and DOT recognized the volume on Mast Road, they designed these entrances so you can get a tractor trailer or a large vehicle in and out without having to go over curbs and the like. And our, my client, Mr. Paris, would like to have that maintained. And Gofftown DPW agrees. There's not an issue now, there shouldn't be an issue. I've been by here 10,000 times, and I've never seen a problem.
Sarah, is that correct? DPW doesn't have any issue with them?
I couldn't, it's up a little bit, I couldn't hear you that well.
Sarah, the applicant was talking about the, the size, the existing curb cuts on this site, and he represented that DPW doesn't have any issues with them. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
So we're willing to augment the landscaping, that's not a waiver request, and the maintaining the existing entrances on Mast Road, that's also not a waiver request. We would just like it to stay the way it is, as we show it. And the, and how's, as it was shown on the 2010 site plan for the rock solid landscaping, we'd like that to just go away. So I guess I'll let you act on that, and then we can, we can discuss the meat of this proposal.
Well, I guess you're telling me I don't have anything to act on?
Are you withdrawing them?
Well, they're not waivers, they're truly not waivers.
So I don't have, so it's really part of the amendment?
So the waivers, the waivers are withdrawn, we'll work out the landscaping according to, I think, the 2010 site plan, and we'll just move forward.
Okay. All right, so what's the proposal, why don't you run through what the proposal for the use of the, the new use is? Use of the site for the new use?
The proposal for the, for the new use is for the rear of the property on Poteen Street, which is in the rear of map 18 lot 28 and map 18 lot 27, which front, which both front on Joffrey Street. That gravelled area back there, behind the stockade fence and the chain link fence with the gate, Jordan Jeffroy and his, and his wife Carrie operate Jorker Towing, and they would like to, to locate their business here. They do a lot of local towing, and this would be an ideal location for them to, to really get their, their business established, and it's convenient for them, and it's available. Again, my, my involvement with this part goes back to 1989. This was always used back there as either vehicle storage or landscaping or vehicle sales. The towing company is a permitted use. It's not a junk company, they don't junk cars, they don't park cars, and it does not meet the statutory definition of a junkyard. That's not even proposed. I know Joanne has it in one of her conditions, that no junk's allowed, but that's already in the zoning, so we're not proposing that. So you'll see Joanne's review, and we have, we have addressed all of her comments, and I had written a letter and submitted it with the revised plans last week. The, the biggest items I, I feel that we probably need to discuss is the police department's recommendation for a video system. Seems like it was included as a condition of approval, I'm not so sure that you can do that.
All right, well, so why don't, so you don't, if you don't have much issues or you think they've all been taken care of, why don't we run through the planning department comments? There was a concern about tow truck use, this does abut residential, three residential lots. So I noticed that there was a note on the plan in regards to hourly restrictions, and so I'm, I'm just trying to see, do we have another ch, do you want to take this chair right here?
Mike, do you want to put your plan up?
Yeah, I'll try this. No, we're just going to...
I'm not going to stand because I have a pinched nerve in my lower back, so...
Good.
Please continue.
All right, so there's, given the location and the type of business, so it is zoned for it, there's a concern about noise and impact on a butters. I noticed there's a note on hours of operation, so why don't you talk about that?
Which, which note number, what number is that?
Um, 12.
Are you on the...
Uh, no, I'm on the plan note.
Plan note 12, yeah. There's, so their standard hours are like most other businesses, 8:30 to 4:30, Saturday 9 to noon, where they have, you know, because a lot of people buy equipment, they buy cars or whatever, and they would like to have them towed in a non-emergency situation. So Carrie staffs the office, Jordan runs the truck, and then if, if for some reason there was an odd request, they have it by appointment, and then emergency hours is necessary. What that means is, when Jordan gets a call from the local police department, state police, Gofftown PD, whatever, he has to go clear an accident scene in the middle of the night, or if someone has broken down, he, he drives his truck, and, and most of the time, the vehicles don't come back to the towing company unless it's an accident. And I'll let him speak to the operations, the daily operation of his business, but he has the ability to silence the backup alarms on his vehicles. We're not proposing any new lighting on the site because that's usually just a nuisance for everybody. Security, you know, when, when everything is lit up, people can see the cars that are there. If it's not lit up, they can't, and then you can see people with lights poking around the yard. So we have not included a lighting plan because we're not proposing any new lights, other than I think there's a motion sensor light on their cameras.
All right, let's go back to operations. So there is a time restriction proposed on the plan for operation. So let me ask you, it has been suggested to me that a lot of people who are on call for towing, the bus, the truck goes with the tower.
Correct.
Is that right?
Normally, residents...
So you're on call list for various things, so do you come back to this location on an emergency call to pick up the vehicle, or is the vehicle usually with you?
Only the reason I'd go back is if it was a police toll, if it was a, an accident, a really bad accident, that's the only reason we would go back, just for security reasons.
But that would be to bring it, not...
That would be bring it to just drop it a lot.
Not, not the initial response.
No, no, no. The truck is always at, as a residence, that way we can just get dispatch to see it from our residence.
All right, and I am reminded by our recorder, could you please tell us your name?
I'm Jordan Jeffroy, I'm an owner, and this is my wife Carrie Anne.
Carrie Anne Jeffroy. Thank you. Okay. So the emergency hour operation will generally be a return when it occurs?
Correct. And then the emergency after hours, we have that in place just for, say, if we got an accident, and say the customer was a diabetic, they left their diabetic medication, they left something of importance in, in the vehicle, we would give them access to access.
You'd have to go back.
You know, those items from their vehicle.
All right, now, I, there's another planning comment in regards to gravel, because the plan, and I think this is from the previous plan, existing gravel, existing gravel, there apparently is not much gravel, so are we going to put gravel where there is?
Well, I think some stuff needs to be cleaned up. I think that rock solid landscaping left it...
Pretty used.
Pretty used. So I'm not positive what's underneath the overburden. I know it's all sand beneath it, but if he needs to put a hard, compact surface down, then that's what he's going to have to do.
Okay. And then another question, the, the vehicle sales area is in the front, and that's going to remain separate, right?
Correct.
Okay. And there is a garage, an office area on this portion of the property, so what's the, are those buildings in use now? What's the proposed use of those?
Explain that. I believe that they're empty now, they're vacant now, and I'll let Jordan... So the office area would just be, you know, a dispatch area, as well as a pickup area where customers would come and pay for their vehicles to be released. The shed behind the office area, which is 230 square feet, which we...
The shed behind the office area, which is 230 square feet, which would be used as a motorcycle or recreational vehicle storage. And then the existing garage would be if there was a really damaged vehicle that we didn't want to be seen by the public, it would go in there. Or if it was a police impound, we had to hold until we get it over the police department. That's where that vehicle would go. There'd be no mechanics going on in there, none of that. So, the real use of the lot would just be the office mainly, like I said, for dispatching and for customers picking up their vehicles. And then the main lot itself would just be for storage of.
But we also do dispatching at home as well.
We also do dispatching after hours when we're not at the office. We do it out of our home.
We're all doing that kind of stuff at home.
Everything we do is digitally dispatched. So, I mean, I get a phone call. I can dispatch it to somebody else. I can dispatch it to myself.
And up until yesterday, I was working a full-time job. So, I was working very late with a towing company.
So.
I told you yesterday. Okay. All right. And there are two cars under a tarp, I think, there.
Those cars are the personal property of the property owner, Mr. Paris. They fall under the statutory definition of an antique vehicle.
Sort of hard to tell under the tarp.
Well, I'll let him speak to that. He's going to come up and.
My recollection is these vehicles have been the subject of discussions before. So, is there any requirement for an antique vehicle to have been run in the last 10 years? I don't know. Mike, do you? You do not know?
That is not my thing.
So, the two vehicles that are there, one of them.
Could you please just tell us your name for the record?
Charles Paris.
Yeah?
Managing member, CK.
Okay.
The two vehicles that are under the tarps, one of them is a parts car for a car that I'm restoring that's in my shop right now. And the other one is a.
Well, he's got his mask. Unfortunately, you have to speak up for this microphone.
Okay.
Okay.
So, the two cars that are under the tarps, one of them is a parts car for a car that I'm restoring for myself, which is in my shop currently. The other car is a '67 vehicle that belonged to my dad. That is rare because that particular year, they only made one style. So, both of those cars, back in May, I was given, Nancy Larson paid me a little visit. And she'd given me documentation, which I can send this around?
No, why don't you just hold on to it?
Okay. Stating that, because there was question whether or not they were acceptable to remain there. And what they determined, what she determined was that as long as the cars were covered and they'd be able to remain in that one spot. And reading some of the ordinances, what it said, it would have to be covered and possibly have a fence or some sort of shrubbery of some sort so that it is not visible to the neighbors. The cars are not only covered, but there's a six-foot fence. There are two or three trees there. And there's also a shed on the other side that belongs to one of the butters. So, I did take some photos of how much greenery, the fence, and how the cars look sitting in the lot.
Mike, could you point on the plan to where the cars are parked?
They're right in this corner here.
Okay.
In the southwest corner of the property off of Patane Street.
So, does that mean it's the intent of this applicant that that corner of the property, if I was to draw the 115-foot line from map 1828 back, does that mean that it's the intent of this applicant for the business to not use that portion of the property for the towing?
Yeah. Well, I guess, yeah, that's right.
Right. Well, you're telling me you've.
X-ray glasses were at the repair shop. I couldn't see where Mike was pointing when he said here.
Here, Jim. Right. The southwest corner, the 40-foot dimension by 25.35 feet. So, according to Joanne's memo, one of the last items, 11 or 12, that staff felt that it would be okay to not have to upgrade the landscaping if they agreed not to store vehicles here for the towing business.
Well, I think that's a point of discussion because I think the issue is, I didn't see her recommendation for stowing of the towing business. I think the issue was that.
Well, I think we have a conflict between.
Well, we have an applicant who can apply or not.
Well, we have a conflict between what one person in the staff is recommending saying and another member of your staff saying to the owner and the owner of the vehicles that he can leave them there.
Tim?
So, this little corner that you're discussing right now with the Mr. Paris, two cars are being parked. It states in the waiver section about lieu of requiring additional landscaping. They're not asking for the waiver any longer.
No.
So, it's kind of a moot point. Because whether they store two personal vehicles of Mr. Paris there or on the plan, they show two cars that are part of the towing business there. As long as they keep them within those five-foot vehicle storage setback lines that are noted on this plan, it's sort of a moot point. Which vehicles are parked there? The owners or the applicants? The two vehicles are two vehicles. They're all the same.
Well, I guess I'm sort of curious as to what our definition of a vehicle is because I'm not sure that these would qualify as vehicle. So, okay.
Well, according to Nancy Larson, they meet the statutory definition in the RSAs.
Right. But I also have a plan to approve. And that means I have different considerations as to approving the site as compared to what might currently be there and might currently be in compliance or not. Correct? Two different things. So, all right. Other, Tim?
So, did Mr. Paris state that in Nancy's opinion, those vehicles are in compliance? Is that what this gentleman just stated?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So, they are in compliance then?
Okay. Any other board members? We've sort of been taking over the discussion in the in-person piece of this meeting. Board members online have any questions or comments?
I have a question. Because the, there's a mention about approved plan. I understand approved plan, but the plan that was approved at one time, did it ever get finalized? I mean, is it actually in compliance?
No, it's not.
No, it doesn't sound like it.
Only in terms of the landscaping. Everything else is done.
And the curb cut.
So, landscaping isn't it?
And the curb cut. But that business is no longer there. So, the curb cut remains as it is.
Barbara, I'm sorry. I didn't hear the applicant's response. Could you have him repeat it?
You guys could talk louder. Sorry.
The only deficiency from the 2010 site plan is the landscaping, which we've agreed to amend or augment, however you want to put it. And the desire by the applicant to maintain the two openings on Mass Road as NHDOT put them there.
Thank you. That was much better.
Can I have a follow-up question on that, Barbara?
Phil.
If we have a site plan that has landscaping in it, isn't it a requirement that the landscaping be maintained?
That landscaping was all in place. I believe it died. And it's. It's been recently restored. I mean, that may be discussion between staff for compliance and the applicant and owner. But there is landscaping in place. It's not like it's not there. It's there.
No. My question is, is the way you responded about the landscaping being replaced, doesn't the landscaping have to be maintained as a part of approved site plan?
Yes.
Even if it dies?
Yes.
It doesn't have to be replaced. It's a requirement to replace it, isn't it?
Yes, and they did.
And is the landscaping that you've shown on this is on the plan?
Pretty much, yes.
The same number of shrubs are there, the bark mulch.
You can make that up. It came from the.
Oh, no. We, yeah, it was all part of the original site plan. Matter of fact, that goes all the way back to the 1989 site plan.
Any other board members have comments, questions? I heard Karen.
I was just wondering when, I'm sorry, I'm not sure if it's the applicant or the attorney, but when he says it pretty much demonstrated on the site plan, what does that mean?
I didn't hear what you said, Karen. Pretty much what?
Pretty much understand, I'm sorry. He said it's pretty much demonstrated on the site plan.
I think we're talking about the bush. If you look on Patane Street, the bushes, the existing landscape island, those bushes, we're not sure that's exactly what's there, but that is what is on the current plan. And there have been a couple of attempts at planting along that stretch. I think that's what he was referring to.
Thank you.
Peter.
As one that walks down that street quite a bit, there are bushes there and it is a box mulch. One of the issues we had there was they were parking Jeeps and parking vehicles up on it for a display. And I think that had taken care of. And are they asking for a curb cut on Patane Street?
No, it's existing.
Okay. And another problem we had on that, like I said, I walked that street, was they were parking on the side of Patane Street and had vehicles parked there on the previous person. And how would we make sure that that doesn't happen again? In fact, they had a vehicle that was parked there for like three months, a truck full of trash.
That was the car sales guy that was there before. He's no longer in the picture. And I have the assurance from Mr. Paris that that won't happen again.
Barbara, this is Jim.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I don't want to be cloud a field that was visually clouded. But first of all, Karen, Mike, to his credit, is not a lawyer. Second, the discussion on the curb cuts, I've lost that. I understood that planning board previously, and I may have been on it, did not approve the expansion or rather required that they bring into performance without our site plan requirement. And that may not have been done. And I understand DPW is okay with the curb cuts as presented. But curb cut width was limited and was designed not just to provide for vehicle access, but it was also intended for pedestrian and bicycle and other safety where you don't have wide entrances with vehicles coming in and out at various places. So, I don't know if that's been addressed.
Sarah, can you let the board know what your experience is in regards to any issues that have been brought to DPW's attention in regards to those curb cuts?
Both Eric and myself are not aware of any issues having been brought up with it since planning board denied it. It was constructed wide and never amended. And we have not heard any complaints or any problems, not aware of there being accidents.
Okay, thank you.
So, we continue to support.
Thank you. Patty, are you aware of, is there anything else along Mass Road where we have these wide curb cuts?
I didn't know if the family dollar, I don't know how wide theirs is, but I remember they had an issue, like they wanted.
We made it wider for the truck turning, I think?
I don't know. And then there's also some of the other businesses, like Saretz has extremely wide.
That's true. Saretz has a huge one.
Yeah. I know because I walk that. And it's like, it's much wider.
Apparently the planning board is walking Parnell all the time.
It's much wider than this curb cut.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying because people die in polio in Massachusetts. We can let them die here and pick polio because it's a historical event. I guess I can't accept that reasoning, but I'll be fine.
You should use recent, Jim, as in the COVID.
He was trying to. All right. All right. Other questions from board members? Okay. So, there has apparently been a determination that we don't need a waiver for the curb cut. And the planning recommendation was that we do not deal with the landscape, that we do not grant a landscape waiver, but the representation is it is as it has been approved on the current plan. There are some concern over board members on the size of the curb cut. Are there any other issues from board members before I open this up for public comment? I just.
Barbara, this is Jonah. Anticipating a public comment that may be made. There's discussion on hours of operation and emergency use, which I understand for a towing company. But I would assume that we would put some condition on our approval that would say if it became a nuisance, we could restrict it. And that was just a discussion of some kind of way if we worked at the total hours of operation.
Their staff has added a condition 11 on the chair's report that you should have gotten that says any issues or nuisances, the board reserves the right to revoke or revisit the site plan approval. Yeah, well, that was new. So, you wouldn't have seen it before. The applicant has their hand up.
What if it comes to an instance where the police department got to get in there after hours? What do we do in that situation? What do you want to?
Well, I mean, I'm assuming that's an emergency issue, right?
Right, right. I mean, just like I said, just like it's listed on here, emergency hours is necessary. I mean, you know, just, you know, if there was ever a case where the police or fire, God forbid, ever had to come in, I mean, that would fall into that. Okay.
Tim had his hand up.
I just want to make sure Mike saw all these conditions for approval. Did you see all these ones that are in red?
I think the 11 might have been added. David.
Same question. Would it be helpful for?
It's what I gave you earlier, Mike.
Read these conditions because we're privy to them, but maybe the larger audience would like to hear them enumerated.
Okay. Other board members? I'm trying to get board member issues out before we go to public comment. Tim?
One last question for Mike off the plan per se. Mike, I see lot 18-32. I see lot map 18 lot 30. Is there a 31 in the middle somewhere that's not marked?
31, I believe, used to be on the corner of Mass Road and Patane Street, which was consolidated and merged many years ago when I did the site plan for what was going to be a mobile mini mart. So, that lot went away.
So, map 18 lot 30 comes back to what you have listed as a tract line on the map plan here?
Yes.
That's where lot 30 ends?
Yes.
32 begins?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Patty?
Staff was meeting earlier. We had a discussion when we were looking at the landscaping, whether additional landscaping would be required. So, it was recommended that we said it, well, we were looking whether you could accommodate more landscaping. And we were trying to look at how to create a buffer. So, we were recommending that there was no storage of vehicles or equipment. And we're saying most easterly side, which is probably wrong, but that little area that, where your cars, where Mr. Paris's cars are, it was recommended that nothing be stored there. So, I don't know how you want to approach that. I'm just pointing that out. That was like a recommendation in lieu of the landscaping, but that's not being required. So, I don't know if you're all right with them being stored there. I just want to point that out. It was added. Nine, 10, and 11 were added.
Okay. Other board members? And then I'm going to go through the conditions. All right. I'm not seeing anything. Mike?
Jordan, the applicant, has agreed to not store any towed cars in that 25 by 40-foot section that directly abuts the banners. But that doesn't include Mr. Paris's personal vehicles. But he won't increase the storage there. And we'll take that off the plan.
Okay. Let me, I'll cover it when we go through. All right. So, there are some suggested conditions that I'm going to go through with the applicant now so that when we open it up for public comment, they will have been discussed. There is a request for a lighting plan. And I'm hearing from the applicant, they don't want to do any lights. They don't think the site needs more lights and that that would be more of a nuisance to the neighborhood than not. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Install chain link privacy fence slats on the existing chain link fence. What section of it is the chain?
The piece. The piece of chain link fence that's at the entrance to Patane Street, it runs approximately 40 feet towards the existing 612 square foot garage.
Oh, I see it, it's off the roof.
That's the only piece of chain link fence.
All right, are there any issues with putting the privacy slats in that? Okay. Maintaining a clear route from the gate for fire department access to vehicles and buildings.
Yeah, not a problem.
Fire extinguishers on site, these are all fire department recommendations. Vehicles should be six feet or more away from combustible buildings.
We have shown that.
And you've shown that. And then as to fluid and hazard mitigation, there are a number of best practices and storage issues. And that would include if they were to store auto parts or do any vehicle, would change the code requirements.
But they don't, that's not their business.
That's not their business. Junk vehicles shall not be parked or stored on lot 32. And what you're telling me is that you're in compliance with that because you have an opinion from the zoning code enforcement officer that those vehicles are okay there. Condition eight is the minimum of four inches of gravel will be installed in the area being used for storage of vehicles. As it appears, it's all dirt at this point. We're talking about the existing gravel area that is pre-used. Is there, Patty, is this right, that there's a zoning designation on the plan for map 18 lot 20 that needs to be changed?
Yeah, it is zone commercial, not residential two. And then where the plumber placed the condos across the street, kind of behind Dunkin's, that is actually split zone. So we're just saying where it says it's residential two, it should say residential two slash commercial. Just the zoning designation on each, the individual lots was wrong.
Yeah, okay.
That's all that, it's just a correction on the plan.
In lieu of requiring additional landscape, there will be no storage of vehicles or equipment in the most easterly side of lot 32 in the section that's 25 by 40. This will be noted on the plan, the applicant has agreed to that?
Yes.
Any issues or nuisances, the board would, reserves the right to revoke and revisit the site plan? There is also that there will be no repairs done on site, or in the buildings? Correct? Buildings are for storage and for office use.
But that goes with this lot 32, not with the auto body business, which is part of the whole site plan too.
Well, that's a little bit of a fine point, because the existing garage is on lot 30, it's not on lot 32.
No repairs done with the towing business, I would say.
Yes, I think that would be a more accurate statement.
Correct.
Because.
Yeah, that's not their business.
Yeah, no repairs done with the towing business.
Barbara, may I be heard on a?
Yeah, I'm just trying to make sure that I've gone through everything on the sheet, and I think I have. Jim?
The app, the app, the land use approvals go with the owner of the land, not to this particular company. And we have a lot that has two uses on it. So we're not just granting approval for this particular company on its section of the lot, for the whole lot. So you can't distinguish, well, that's existing business, and this is just a new business, unless you tie them, you're not granting an approval to this towing company. You're granting approval to a land owner, to allow a use on this land, and who has put there its business. You can't just say, well, that's the existing business, that's separate. No, it isn't.
I assumed that the condition would be related to the specific buildings and would not be related to the business, since we were talking about a plan, but maybe I misunderstood.
To the, you're sort of had to distinguish between the existing business and just the additional or new business that's being put on there.
Right. I assumed that this reference was going to be the 230-foot shed, the office area of 188 square feet, and the existing garage of 612 will be used for office purposes and storage only.
That's correct. We can add a note to the plan for that.
And that will be, okay, and Mike has agreed to put that in a note? And the conditions such, so let me just make sure that we're sure on the lot line for 32, because we do a lot of references to 32. Mike, where exactly is that line?
See, it says tract line, Barbara?
Right here, Barbara.
He's putting it right there. Okay, all right.
Barbara?
Yes?
So I go back to number one about a lighting plan being submitted that they not want to add any lights. And I apologize because I'm looking at this small map. I only find two lights on the whole site in the middle of the lot, on the corner of the building. It says there's a utility pole with a light. And then on the corner of Patane and Mass Road, I see a notation that says there's an existing light pole base. It just says a light pole base. Am I correct that this entire site has only one light?
Mike?
No.
I would assume that the base does not have a light.
That's correct, Phil. There are two lights on the existing 2,900 square foot building that light up everything towards Dunkin' Donuts. And the pole with the light by the existing 612-foot square foot garage, lights up that area. And then the other lights are shown are just wall-mounted lights at entrances. And that's all.
Where are the lights, Mike? I don't know what you're talking about.
There's a little symbol on the plan that shows existing lights, building mounted lights. And.
Okay, I'm trying, I'm just trying to get an idea of what you're talking about on the plan.
On the office area of 188 square feet, Phil, you see that on the plan?
It's a half circle at the corner of the office representation, with fuzzy lines coming out of the half circle.
By what street? Patane, Mass, Joffrey?
Phil, Phil, do you see, do you see the rectangle that says existing garage?
Existing automobile repair and auto body garage?
No, no. It's the storage lot. A 612 existing garage. There's a rectangle called existing garage, 612 square feet.
Existing building?
No. Look at map 18 lot 28, 8 Joffrey Street.
Right, okay.
Go to the stock fence, what would be at the backside of the lot off of Joffrey. What we're talking about is use of the lot behind map 18 lot 28. The existing garage is at the, I don't know, east-west, north-south-east corner. Existing garage, 612 on the lot.
I'm looking at 1828, 8 Joffrey Street.
Okay, behind that is, says existing garage with 612 square feet. And it has little lights on it.
Are you talking?
Towards Patane.
Okay. Existing garage, 612 square feet?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Do you see the half circles facing Mass Road?
Okay, because I'm looking at a very small map, and I got to use a magnifying glass, so I apologize.
Those are lights, Phil, those are lights.
It's to the right of where it says office area 188 square feet?
Correct.
Okay, I see that, that's the other light.
There were three lights on those buildings, Phil, that are going to be maintained.
Okay, yeah, all right, I apologize, because I see that now.
Okay, all right.
No problem, Phil.
Barbara, this is Jim. I have a question. Are the lots complying with our sky ordinance?
I didn't understand you, Jim. Are the lots complying with what?
The lights, the lights complying with our sky ordinance.
They've been there 30 years.
I would guess no.
That doesn't matter. Again, this is the whole lot we're looking at. They're looking to change, they're not grandfathering it. They're changing the use and what they're doing on it, I don't think.
Okay. So the lighting, so a lighting plan waiver has not been requested?
No.
Okay. So that's an issue.
Well, we're not proposing any new lights. These are all on the approved site plan from 2010 and from the early 90s and from the late 80s.
I know, but the point of the member would have been, would be that there is a change in use proposed for the lot, and therefore requirements kick in. And maybe it's just a question of which waivers should be requested.
We would like to request a waiver of a lighting plan, because we're not proposing any new lights. They are showing the existing approved site plans, and I can ratify that in writing tomorrow, Monday.
All right. Other questions or comments from board members before I open the public hearing up? Okay, I'm going to ask the applicant, I think we have, do we have anybody that's called in, Patty?
You do have an abutter online.
Okay. So at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing. I'm going to try and figure out whether I'm going to go up there, or I'm going to have the public come here.
We should have them vacate and have the public.
Yeah, we'll slide out.
Okay, you're going to slide out, all right. Okay, so at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing for this application. Is there members of the public that want to speak? I'm sort of looking to see, I suspect.
Yeah, we're all.
You're all together, so who do you want to come up?
I'll go.
Come up, okay.
Do you have a copy of like the, what you recommend? Because I didn't hear.
Oh, here, let me give, I'll give you, this is an extra cover page.
They still, it goes through there. That's just for the live stream.
Okay, so I've got two, two people up here, things are a little strange, so we're going to do this sort of as best we can. Why don't you both, if you could, give us your name and address?
Sure. Dana Benner, 12 Joffrey Street.
Thank you. And sir?
Mark Tarian, 8 Joffrey Street.
Okay, thank you for coming, all right.
Can I go up now, or should I wait my turn?
Why don't we do this all together, it might work better. Katie, why don't you just go on up there? We're going to need a fourth chair. We want everybody up there, okay.
He's going to stand.
Okay, you want to, you want to just stand? I don't have any more room to give you. There you go. Might be easier to go, oh, plenty of room. All right, normally we take public comment one at a time, but given the circumstances of how we're trying to move this, I am going to recognize you one at a time, this is public comment for the purposes of this application. This is not a dialogue, this is for your input as to what's occurred. And I appreciate that there is some difficulty in following things. The plan that we're talking about is up on the wall. And so I'm going to ask Mr. Benner to go first.
Get two more names, please, or the other two.
Yeah.
The fourth name.
And so.
Okay, it's Gaetan Benner, and I'm an abutter, I live at 12 Joffrey Street.
Thank you. And ma'am?
Jessica Tarian, I'm at 8 Joffrey Street.
All right, Mr. Benner.
All right, just, I just want to, the gentleman who's the surveyor who did it, he was a little off. I've been there for 35 years. When I moved in, that strip of land that's part of this thing in question was, that was residential, was a buffer zone between Paris, at that time, Mr. Paris's dad's property business, and the other budding property that belongs to Mr. Galbaut on Patane Street, and my property. Without any prior surveying, I came home from work and found out that that had been bought by Mr. Paris's father, that strip of land, and the next thing you know, all the trees were taken down, including trees on my property, and pins were pulled on the property. The survey didn't get done until after we took it to court. So that's some basic history on that. The fence was put up, the stockade fence, as part of that court deal with Mr. Paris's father, which it was supposed to be maintained. That fence has never been maintained. When it's fallen over, it didn't get fixed until someone complained to the Paris, or to the town, or both. And they propped it up with a two-by-four and said it was fixed. The people that had rented that lot in the past, it was rock solid. Then it was Big Al's, which became an issue that we drew up with the town, because we went to Mr. Paris and said, he's storing junk over there when it was supposed to be a landscaping business. Oh, I didn't know anything was happening on my property. The town got involved, and things changed. Big Al's got taken out eventually, but it took us fighting like heck to get it done. At that time, the property was not being used for what it was zoned for. It was not zoned for a junkyard or a storage area. So all these site plans and approved usage of that property have never been what the town has said it was supposed to be. It's never been used properly. It's taken us, like I said, we've been there 35 years. It's been an ongoing thing. The Tarians move in next door on 8 Joffrey Street, fences have fallen down. People are backing cars into the fences. We complained. They spoke to Mr. Paris. There were tires and flammable liquids and everything else stored over there. Nothing got done. Razor blades are found in their yard when they have little kids over there. Language is nothing, is, was horrible. Now, I don't know the people that own the towing company, and I'm sure they are fine people. I have nothing against them. But there's proven track history of the town saying the property will be used this way, and it's never, and nobody enforces it. No one ever enforces it. Those junk cars, part of our court dealings with Paris, which is now Chuck Paris's business, whose mother owned it with his father originally when the court thing came down, and is now still part of his business. So there is a tie there, it's not two separate businesses. And so those cars were, we brought it up, they're saying junk cars, there was vermin living in them. We've provided photos numerous times, put it down, please. We've provided photos. Classic cars are sitting there. They had plants growing out of them, plants growing around them, there was plants all over them. He has pictures right now, I saw him list one up, of a nice little groomed where it's been mowed. He just mowed that. Yet today, he just mowed that so he could take a picture and say, look how I keep my classic cars. The damn things are rusting and falling apart. I mean, this, this was not supposed to happen. There was supposed to be no junk cars there. Now, a parts car is not, can't be moved, it can't be driven anyplace, it's just parts. Well, it's rusting into the ground over there. So, I mean, I don't, like I said, the people with the towing company, I don't know who they are, and I'm sure they're fine people, I'm not criticizing them in nothing. But the part of the problem is, is there's no guarantee that they're going to do what they want. But the, the part of the problem is, is there's no guarantee that they're going to do what they wanna do. I work for DOC. I work for the Department of Corrections. It's a prison. I get up at three o'clock in the morning, and I'm out the door by five to go to work, and I work long hours. And the last thing I want is trucks pulling in and out and this and that. Now, where are they gonna pull in from? They're gonna pull in from Joffrey Street, which has a wide entrance there? Are they gonna pull in from Batain Street? Are they gonna pull in from Mass Road? Where are they gonna pull in from? And what's to say that they're gonna, it's not gonna sit there and idle and play around and the chain's coming off the thing? And, and yes, he says he can turn off the beepers on the backing up the trucks, but is there a guarantee that there is gonna be someone turning off the beepers? Oop, I forgot, sorry, my bad. Now, also, the, the thing is, what about, people get their cars towed and they get put in that lot? Some people aren't happy when they get their cars towed. Now, now you're endangering, you know, my family and the Tarians and other people that live there because somebody wants to break in and get something out of their car. You know, I'm, this is ridiculous. It wasn't, when Rock Solid was there, they actually were decent neighbors. They kept that landscaping area, that area was clean. It wasn't until they left that, and then Big Al's came in, that the place trashed out. So that's, you know, that's all I got to say on that.
So your concern is in regards to the upkeep and the maintenance?
Upkeep, maintenance, nuisance, safety.
Okay, thank you.
And, and, and having the town enforce whatever you guys decide they're gonna do, enforce it. I shouldn't have to, we shouldn't have to beg the town to come do something. And, and we should be able to go, we should be able to go to the owner and say something and have something done also, so, you know, that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Yes, Katie Benner. Um, I'm visual, so I have to show you, okay? This is what we had prior, okay, to, to this business.
Okay, Ms. Benner, I don't, I don't, I, I want you to know, I remember when you came here for that, and I'm glad that the town helped you take care of that problem.
Okay, so that's done and over with, but however, this is what we've had to put up with, okay? So this is why I'm very nervous about a towing company coming in, okay, because it could create other junk also. Because they do tow, uh, cars that go off the road, okay, wrecks and everything. And this is beyond, I think, just a towing company, because it's gonna become an impound lot, impound lot. Do we have, um, do we have zoning for impound lots? Because towing is, is the truck itself bringing the vehicle, but then you're, you're getting into the storage of the vehicle, which can get into junk, could get into nuisance, and whatever we had before, alright? So I, you know, the, the letter that we received, okay, from, um, from Mr. Galbaud, which he got from, from Mr. Jordan, mentions impound lot, okay, so again, there was no mention as an impound lot, but it's part of the business. And to show you a picture, what's behind.
Don't.
Okay, no, behind the tarps, okay, of the cars, of the junk cars, this is it, okay? This is not collector's cars. These are junk cars, okay? And it shouldn't be okay to have this in the yard and just put a tarp over it, and, and it doesn't go away. It's, it's underneath the tarp. So it's not okay to break the rules, the laws, or even a court order and just hide it. That's not right. And we also have a petition from, um, two thousand nine, eighteen, okay, with all our, um, people on different streets, Batain Street, Joffrey Street, all the surrounding area, that they don't want junk cars, okay? So this should still, still be good. It's a petition. People don't want that kind of business, junk cars. We have a court order that has not been vacated, okay, and that, it, it was made out, um, okay, Dana and Gayton versus Robert Paris and et al. Et al, I looked that up. That means and all, family, and at the time when this agreement was made, Mr. Paris's, uh, wife, Robert Paris's wife, was part of the business, and she still is, according to documentations, okay? Well, according to a twenty-twenty, uh, report, okay, that we found under, uh, businesses, that she's still, that she's still in there. I believe her name is Elise, your mom's name. She's part of the business. She's, okay, she, she, she's part of that, okay? There's, it has not been vacated. It's still ongoing, and it's part of the nuisance and hazard. So I mean, what does it take not to get junk cars, okay? I mean, it doesn't show that Mr. Paris is gonna try to, try to be a good neighbor again. I mean, he, he refuses to move those cars, even after what, what we have. And a correction that, we've never had a towing company back there. Never, never, never had a towing company. I looked up the records. There was auto sales, okay, auto sales, auto body, which he works, and also, um, mechanics, but never a towing company. Not done legally at least, okay? I have no, no record of that. So anyhow, we matter too. I've never been late on my taxes. I've been there for thirty-five years plus, alright? And this, this, a, a business like this does not belong in, it's a residential area. You know, Dana has to get up early in the morning, okay, and, uh, we don't have any problems either with, um, with people breaking into their vehicles, security issues. And also, okay, according to the plan, they said the normal business hours would be eight-thirty to four-thirty, but then we look up in Facebook, and that's not the norm, okay? Um, you know, I know, they sound like very hard workers, okay, and, um, but they're saying that, um, that it's not a twenty-four, I mean, it's not a eight-thirty by four-thirty business, okay? That, uh, running a small business is not easy, okay? Jordan runs the truck twenty-four-seven, doesn't get, uh, much sleep, does, doesn't get to eat dinner with his family, missing a lot of family time, okay, long nights. He's hauling from Massachusetts also. We know how, how bad COVID is there, okay? It's over a hundred thousand cases. And you're towing a car, you're bringing something from Massachusetts back to our town, Goss Town? We're risking, you know, more COVID. We don't want that, you know? It does, it does stay on the, on surfaces for a while. Someone touches that, we don't wanna, we, we don't wanna get infected. I have grandchildren, you know? And, um, you know, we matter too. We matter also. This is, this is a, a residential area, okay? It's not, it's, you're, you're, you're taking the commercial and you're bringing it down the streets. That's not right. That lot should have never been changed, okay, from, from, um, from residential to commercial. It was our buffer. And I guess that's all what I have to say. I'm very upset about this, you know? We matter, you know?
Thank you, you do.
I'm respectful, you know? I respect my neighbor. I, I, I honor laws and I, um, I do what I'm supposed to do. I don't break laws.
Alright, and thank you, and thank you. We do have your package that we got, um, and with all of the documents that you showed us, and
Thank you.
We did take a look at it, so thank you. Alright, um, we've heard from the Benners. Would Mr. and Mrs. Tarian like to say something?
Sure, um, I'll start off by just asking everyone to forgive my ignorance. This is my first town hall meeting. I don't know what protocols are. I don't know what we're allowed to say or ask or find out, all that stuff, so.
You'll find out.
So, um, I, I wanted to just kinda come and hear what was going on and, and what, um, what the protocols are or what the rules that are supposed to be followed are, and then, um, and then just what, what actions we might be able to take if they're not being met. Uh, we've owned the house for six or seven years now, and, um, the way we've understood from the Benners of how the, the area should be maintained hasn't been what it should be. At least my, the way I read the paperwork, and we, we do have little kids. We've had a fence, a fence nearly falling down in our backyard and,
For like three years.
It, it was there for a long time, and, and we asked for it to be taken care of, and it did eventually get done, but it took a very long time. We, we found lots of things in our yard, like, like razor blades and stuff, and I know sometimes that'll, things like that will happen. I spoke to Chuck earlier today and just kinda laid out some of my thoughts and all, and I don't, I don't wanna be trying to cause a ruckus, anything like that, but I think that it's, it should be an expectation that whatever is agreed upon should be upheld. And, uh, and Chuck assured me that that would happen going forward, and, and I really, um, hope that is the case. I just wanna know what, what, um, we can do if, if it's not. Um, I certainly hope it is. Again, I, I too have no, um, qualms with, with you folks in the towing, in your, your towing business, and, um, I, we just, I, I hope that what will be said here and said as expectations will be followed through on, and, I just wanted to kinda, again, find out what, you know, what we could do if that's not necessarily the case.
Alright, thank you. Um, I'm, I'm just going to say, cause this is, this, a public hearing is really for us to sort of hear public comment on the plan and what we sort of talked about, and I know we've sort of changed the room set up with the COVID to sort of let the spacing be a little better. So, we've talked about conditions of operations on a lot. This is a lot that's owned commercial. The history of the zoning, we all know that there are lot lines between different districts, and we try to have buffers, but we don't have buffer zones often. But you are budding a commercial zone, um, where there are certain permitted uses. Um, and if you have questions on how, and this is in general for anybody in the public, if you have questions as to the use of a lot, whether it's permitted, um, you're, you can call planet, the planning department in regards to the lot number and what's going on. If, in your particular case, you'd have a site that had a plan, that should be followed, and if there's an issue with it not being filed, um, we have someone called a zoning code enforcement officer, um, who is, their charge as an employee of the town is to make sure that plans are complied with. And so that would be what you would do. Um, I believe Ms. Benner has tried that. She's been very frustrated in the past, um, in regards to dealing with this because the town tries to work with property owners to get them to comply with plans. And one of the provisions, and you may not have heard it, would be if there, if it is found to be a nuisance, which the town might look into if it was getting repeated calls from the butters as to things happening. Um, the, the planning board would reserve the right to revoke or revisit the site plan approval. And I will just say something that's not in your neighborhood, that was commercial affecting residences. There were many, many calls and complaints and minutes, if not hours, spent around these tables on the Irving Station, um, at the lights by the county property. Because there were issues in regards to when the pumps were being shut down and when the lights were being turned off because of the issue on, um, the residences that were around there. So there was a plan, there were requirements, and there was a lot of back and forth that went through the town to try and make that site comply with that. And, and that's why you'll go around and you'll see certain businesses, the lights go out at certain times or, or things change because of that. So that's sort of an example of a place we had issues and we got compliance with the plan, and that would be what would happen for anybody who was trying to deal with, um, the plans. I have heard a comment that I am gonna want the applicant to address in regards to access to the lot. Um, that was an interesting question, given that we're requesting to keep the large curb cuts. What are we gonna be using for going? What do we expect is gonna be the main use for these vehicles going in and out, although they're certainly entitled to use all of them? And so that's the type of thing we look for in public comment, to hear your comments, so then we can follow up again with the applicant as to other questions or concerns that we haven't thought of. So with that, is there anything else either one of you would like to say?
Um, I'll just add that I'm pretty concerned with, like, what Dana was saying, like, how it just hasn't been upkept. You know, like, the fence was a real big annoyance for us. And like, I have a garden and we have a sandbox. I got poison ivy last year because I was cutting poison ivy that was growing underneath into our kid's sandbox, and that's just, like, it literally was weeded for the first time in the seven years that we've lived there today. And so going forward, that would need to be, like, it's, it's growing through the fence, and it's cracking the fence, and if that was part of the deal, like, to uphold, you know, to keep the fence up, then that landscaping needs to be maintained along the fence. Cause I'm constantly throwing the vines that are growing up, you know, plopping them off at the top and then throwing them back over because they're still attached to the ground, you know?
It's the fence, there was some talk about the fence being in disrepair. Is the, the fence in repair now?
Partly. It's not falling into our yard. There's still, like, holes from the last, and I know the last resident or whoever owned it or rented it was a pill for everybody, including Mr. Paris. They backed cars into it. There's a couple spots along that still have holes in it. There's, in the corner where the, they're storing the cars, there's boards being pushed out that just need to be kinda replaced. I've tried to nail them back in a few times, that, and that's just from weeds and vines growing through it, so that's not from cars hitting it.
Okay.
Um, and, and I also am concerned about the noise, cause like, we, we, our bedroom is right by, if they were to come in the Joffrey Street, and the last renters would sometimes tow cars away. I think they had too many cars in the lot, and they would get in trouble for that, and so they'd tow cars away at like eleven o'clock at night. And even if they didn't have the backup lights or the backup beepers, it's loud, like, a big engine like that is loud, um, so. That, we're far, we're, it sounds like we're gonna be far away from that, but like, these guys wouldn't be, so that would be a pretty big nuisance, I would say.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have anything else? Okay, I wanna thank you all for coming. Thank you.
Did you have one a butter on, if they wanna?
Okay, but I wanted to thank everybody here, give them their chance, cause I know this is a big deal to come out to meetings now, so thank you very much. Um, Patty has indicated we also have an abutter online. If you'd like to speak, press star nine, and we look forward to hearing from you. Press star nine if you have called into this meeting for this application. This is the application in regards to map eighteen, lots thirty and thirty-two. Nobody's chiming in, so at this time, I'm gonna close the public hearing. On this, um, plan, planning board members, your druthers. Why don't I have the applicant come back? Anybody have any questions for the applicant as a result of the public comment? They're coming back to the table, so we'll be able to hear from them.
Barbara, this is Jim.
Jim?
Among the questions in the, in light of the public comment of course about noise is, we understand the emergency of that, but I'd like to have some, um, description of the frequency at which they occur. If you have three emergency events in a night, that's a lot of emergency, that's predictable of that. If it's once every week, then it's a different matter, and I haven't heard a description of what that means.
So let me ask the applicant.
Sure. So my answer to that is, it depends. We don't know much about the, uh, the amount of work the Goss Town Police Department has. I do know from talking to other tow providers in the area, um, that a majority of the work comes from the state police. Not so much the local town until the winter time. My workload right now, I mean, I'm doing thirty to forty calls a week. I would say roughly maybe, maybe two a week. Get, I'd have to, you know, stay on my truck until I bring it to the body shop the next morning. Um, so that's the expectation of amount of noise I would imagine I'd be making a night. I've addressed the noise issue by having a kill switch, shut-off switch, um, installed on the truck, therefore not being of an annoyance to the butters. My truck's not as loud as you think it was. It is, uh, it's actually a pretty quiet truck. We've put a lot of money into that truck, especially when we first got started. If I had shown you pictures and mechanical records from when I first got that truck to now, you'd be like, oh my God, this guy, you know, really goes above and beyond. Like I said, majority of the toes, when I towed for the Manchester Police Department, maybe, you know, once every couple nights, every couple of nights, the vehicle would get towed in overnight.
And it wouldn't go all the way into.
It wouldn't go all the way in, too, like, if this is the gate right here, if it's after hours, um, I guess I'd even agree a part of the time that was compliant with you guys, that you guys would agree to, at this gate right here, if it was after hours drop, it would just be dropped, the truck would take off. No lights, no backup noise, nothing.
It's so, so that leads me to the question that was raised. How do you anticipate accessing it? When you come in, you're coming in off a mass road.
Well, we are not gonna be using the Batain Street at all, cause there's too much traffic coming from the Dunkin' Donuts right there, and it's such a narrow road. I, I do not wanna be causing a ruckus on that street, which is the traffic coming out from the Dunkin' Donuts and the mobile. I mean, they're gonna be coming in and out right there.
Okay, so you're gonna be using the mass road access?
Right, especially where it's lit from Mr. Paris's property. It's lit all the way down. I got a clear view straight down to my lot.
So the tow, the tow vehicles for the site are gonna use a mass road?
Correct, like, if I was coming in from, uh, from Pinocchio, I'd be coming in here, pulling down here, backing up, opening up that gate with my kill switch on if it was late at night, opening the gate, which I'd have somebody already have opened for me before I even got there on scene. It would literally take me thirty seconds to unload that vehicle, and I'd be on my way.
Well, let's not, don't use those kind of segments. Well, let's not, don't use those kind of statements.
But it, it's a very quick process. Unloading is a lot more different than it is loading a vehicle. You let me just tilt the bed back, let the vehicle down, you're on your way.
Okay. All right, thank you for clarifying that.
You're welcome.
Other questions from board members? Tim?
Well, this is for Mr. Perre because he owns the property. The last time we had an application here, we had a long discussion about the stockade fence and its condition, and we're having the same discussion tonight. The butters have stated that you do repair the fence, but you don't keep it in very good condition all the time. So I think any approval of this project is going to have to require an effort on your part to put more effort into that fence.
I agree.
And maintaining that fence to the condition it's supposed to be in. And if you have to replace a panel, you need to replace a panel and not just jack it up with a two by four and put a piece of plywood on it or whatever's going on back there. I don't know. I'm not accusing you. So go ahead.
The tenant that I've had in there has backed into the fence multiple times. And he's, his commitment to me was to get those things fixed and he didn't. And when he did do it, they're correct. He did stake it up. Now that he's leaving, he's actually paying me to get this thing squared away properly. My, my son and I walked the fence today, as a matter of fact, and there are four poles that need to get replaced, which are going to get replaced. It's going to be sturdy and the slats that are broken currently will be fixed.
Well, I think that'd be a condition of, that the board would like to see.
And when do you anticipate that might happen?
Uh, we're going to start, we already have an auger there. I bought four poles last week from Lowe's, but they were the wrong diameter. So I'm going to have to go to a specialty fencing place to get the proper sized pole. So when the sides come together, they extend into the poles.
So if we were to give our planning director the authority to go out to inspect the fence, that it has been repaired and it is in good condition, you would be, expect that that would be, the stockade fencing we're talking about, you would expect that to be done by when?
I think going all the way around, replacing the poles, if you gave me three weeks.
So August first?
August first.
The other thing that came up was the, the two vehicles that you own that you have stored in the back there.
Yeah.
If in fact they are homes for rats and mice and whatever else may be living under those type, I think you would be obligated to make sure that those proper controls are in place or any vermin that might be living in there. Now, I, now this applicant has stated that, you know, he's not going to use that part of the property, and I know you do own it, but maybe you need to make a concession and move your stuff somewhere else.
Well, I had, Department of Environmental Services did come down because there was a complaint that they said that there were fluids that were leaking from the cars.
Okay.
And they were concerned about cancer and all kinds of things. The land slopes down into our lot, one. Number two, when those cars were put down, there was poly that was laid down on the ground beforehand and then the cars brought in. So when DAS came, DES came out and viewed, they said, this is above and, above and beyond what we would have expected. So we, Nancy had come out, taken a look, and like I said, she made the determination and gave me this paperwork to verify that the cars are okay as long as we cover them. So now we've got a cover over the vehicles. There's a six-foot stockade fence and I have photos of the trees that are on the other side in the Benner's yard that are covering ninety percent. You can't, you cannot see.
Okay, we've already heard this, so I'm just trying to, in light of the time, I want to keep this moving along. The applicant wants to.
I just got something to quick to add, just to the board too as well, the butters. When we talk about junk vehicles, we have an email from the Department of Environmental Services, towing slash, any kind of towing, including storage in pound lots, I'm going to read the RSA one, four, nine. End of life motor vehicle means a wrecked, worn out junk or other motor vehicle that is no longer intended for use or its original purpose and it's destined for final disposal. The term does not include a motor vehicle that is being kept for repair, restoration like Mr. Paris, nor is there temporarily impounded pending identification of last owner of record or settlement of insurance claim in which I deal with on a daily basis with insurance companies. So that wants, I just want to clarify that.
All right, you might want to just clarify for yourself because I think Mr. Paris said that he's got an old vehicle there for parts, so I don't think it would be covered by that.
And then also too, just to add to his point of view, when me and Mr. Paris first had met with my wife when we first met, we talked about the whole lot thing. I remember just bringing it up to Mr. Paris, I'm like, hey, you want to talk about how clean I am? Because we, we did discuss about how the current renter there, remember that? Mr. Brooks was not the cleanest person, but I asked him, I said, come look at my personal truck. I mean, for somebody going to a tow company, I get pretty filthy. How clean was my truck? How clean do I keep it?
All right, we're not, okay, that, thank you very much. Board members, other questions on the phone? Anybody?
I got a question.
Peter.
It's more of a comment. I think, I think that my understanding, Mr. Paris and what we, what we just heard, our code enforcement officer went out there, told him that he was okay to keep the vehicles as long as they were covered. Is that correct understanding?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And then Tim, you want Tim to do something with those vehicles even though the code enforcement officer said he could keep them?
I don't know.
I didn't tell him or ask him to do anything because he might want to consider a concession to, as, to get this project moving forward and get his tenant moved in.
I, I, and they.
I don't know if I agree with that, Tim, saying that, you know, we want you to take care of these vehicles that you're approved to have there.
Well, Peter, if we want to get, Peter, if we want to get into it, we have a code enforcement officer who has apparently made a determination that covering things up is okay, and I'm not aware of any provision.
We're talking two different issues here. Right now, Mr. Paris has permission from the code enforcement officer. Now, Tim wants to make it a condition of approval of.
He did not say that, Peter. Peter, this is one of the problems with remote meetings. He did not say that. You might have heard, he said, you might want to consider a concession. We are, it's stopping.
And what does that imply?
Peter, I didn't hear any further discussion on it until you brought it up. Do you have a point you want to make on a condition that you think would be appropriate or not appropriate?
I don't think we can consider those two vehicles, seeing he has the permission from the code enforcement officer. Now, if we have the planning board, if there's something to take up with the code enforcement officer, that's a different story.
Thank you. Any other comments from planning board members?
Barbara, this is Jim. I don't want to prolong that discussion, but I, I went back to my, when a type plan comes in, it's not just like another property, it's for the whole property.
Exactly.
Anything for the permitted uses. We don't segregate our, isolate our analysis, new area. And so back to Tim's question at the beginning of the hearing, if this site generally is not in compliance, do we ignore that or do we require compliance? And I'm going to say, yes, we do. And as to Peter's point, there's a difference between planning and code enforcement, and we're entitled to impose conditions if, in our planning function, but obtaining the code enforcement officer, the codes in some way, but we're playing a different role here.
Exactly. Thank you for that clarification, Jim. I guess Mike, we have from, let me ask, is there anybody else who has a comment in this? Anybody on the phone?
Hi.
Karen, did I hear something? Okay, so we have a recommendation from the planning director in regards to conditions for site approval. One of the, and this sort of goes to Jim's compliance, non-compliance, the first one being a lighting plan. The fencing issue would appear to be resolved. They're going to do the chain link privacy fence and they've agreed that the stockade fence is going to be repaired and in working condition. That is doing what one expects a stockade fence to do. That can be inspected by August first within the discretion of our planning director. There are some issues in regards to routes to the gates, maintaining clear and fire issues. There is the junk vehicle storage, which is, in this particular case, a planning issue. I have to say, I was not aware that there had been a code enforcement officer opinion issued on that. I'm not quite sure why planning was not aware of that. It must have been right at about the same time. The applicant is aware of the requirement for four inches of gravel. Patty has pointed out zoning designation changes on lots. They've agreed to no use of the twenty-five by forty portion of the lot. We have the issue of the cars being there, the nuisance, complaint of a nuisance. We reserve the right to revoke or revisit. There is going to be no repairs on the existing six twelve square foot garage or shed, the office area of one eighty-eight. Those three areas are going to be used for office or storage purposes only. The tow vehicles will be using the mast road entrances for access to the business operation. And the tow operator will be using a shut off switch for backup of the tow vehicles. And those are the issues or points of operation that I have from, as a result of our discussion. Tim?
So I don't see it as a condition of approval, but I think based on the history of the site that we should require that the surveyor of record provide us with an as-built plan, that the, that the plan was built in accordance with the plan prior to the applicant being allowed to occupy the site and use it.
I don't know, what would the as-built be of?
Well, the fence, the fence repairs, the slats in the chain link fence, the place being graded and whatever the conditions were here that you just got done reading, I think we should know that these conditions are being put in place before the property is being used. And the repair of the fence that the applicant, the property owner has stated that the fence will be repaired in a timely fashion.
Wouldn't those be conditions, wouldn't those be conditions our planning officer would verify?
Right. Okay, Patty?
Just a point of clarification, the zoning determination on the vehicles that are stored there, that came about when she was enforcing the junkyard that was the Big Al, like the complaint that they had, that's when she made the zoning determination.
Yeah, it was, it was May of nineteen.
It was made before this application, that she, she.
So it was May of last year?
May of nineteen.
Yeah, she, that's when she made the determination on him being able to keep those two vehicles.
Okay.
Barbara?
Phil?
Yes. Looking at number six, fluid and hazard mitigation, A says contact New Hampshire DES to obtain and comply with their requirements. You know, we, we discussed parking spaces for the vehicles, but some of these vehicles that come in are actually wrecks and there might be requirement for those particular type of storage area. So I was just looking at that and it's, but there's nothing definitive in there that, that it needs to do, but it just says contact them. Do we need to change it to comply with an H P S?
It says contact and comply.
Right.
I've actually.
Yeah, that would work.
Okay.
I've actually contacted Laurel.
This is the applicant.
This is Carrie, sorry. I've actually contacted Laurel Pushy from the Department of Environmental Services. Her and I have had multiple conversations. You know, we talked about different ways of keeping the yard, you know, if there is a spill, how to, if there's a bad damaged car. What she suggested is covering the vehicle. So we have found.
Vehicle car.
Vehicle car covers that are disposable, that we, you know, put on the cars that are really beamed up, beamed up because what happens if any water hits the car, it wouldn't be flushed away anywhere. So it helped with, you know, any, any fluid that would be there. And then also, you know, we're trying to be eco-friendly. We also found that peat moss actually is a good oil absorber. It doesn't absorb any water. So we'd be using that on site as well to assist with any kind of spills that we could have. Because it's not a chemical, it wouldn't soak into the ground. As I said, it wouldn't absorb any water and one, one pound of it will absorb one gallon of oils, which is probably pretty interesting. So I have a bunch of stuff. I brought a bunch of different articles about it, if anybody's interested on it, about peat moss, about, you know, oil spills, about the car covers. We too have kids, you know, we don't want to have anything unsafe for them if they're ever with us, you know, we are a family. So yeah, as I said, I have spent a lot of time on the phone with her and, you know, we've seemed to find that these were above and beyond of what their expectations were.
Thank you.
No problem.
Other questions or comments from board members?
Um, Jim? I still have my question about lighting and other compliance with zoning of a larger grandfathered, and I question whether it is.
All right, well, the applicant has basically said they have no intention of changing anything else on the site. So I think that's where we're at.
Mike Dahlberg said he's going to apply for a waiver.
Mike Dahlberg said, that's right, he mentioned at the table that he was applying for a waiver of the site plan in regards to a waiver of the requirement for lighting.
So we'll hear that at the next meeting.
So this is going to need to be continued for that, is my expectation.
Barbara, just a comment, if they're going to be applying for a waiver on the lighting, I think we should have a complete listing of exactly what's there for lighting now.
Well, I'm assuming that on the waiver that he'll explain what's there is sufficient and to do that, he'll have to tell us what's there. But I think he understands that. I can't see him, but he's behind me, I assume, getting it.
I can't see him either, so that's why I'm asking.
Okay. All right. All right. Jim, what else? And I think that staff needs to deal with the issue of what else might be in compliance or not in compliance on this site. Anybody else with other issues, specific issues that need to be addressed? I, you know, I think.
Jim, I was still questioning the compliance of the prior approval on the driveway entrances. And I, I'm still unclear. I understand DPW saying there's been no problems, but we're supposed to be proactive, not just reactive. So if, if we have an issue with these, that they're not in compliance with the current site plan, I think that's a concern. And whether we waive that, I mean, we can do that, but I'm not sure I'm going to do it just because I'm listening to say that DPW says there hasn't been problems.
Okay. That's why Patty's here.
Yeah, and he, he's asking for amendment to the, he knows he's not in compliance with the first site plan approval. He's asking for an amendment. It's just the way it was worded on the application. He's asking for amendment to that restriction to be removed so we can keep the access open as it is.
And again, it comes back to the waiver request in the, in the wording as this went forward. All right, any, is there anything else from board members? All right, is there any reason, does any, Patty, what would the applicant have to get in here to, to be on for the next meeting, the written waiver request at this point?
Mm-hmm. And I don't really know how you want him to ask for the, because there's, when you ask for a site plan amendment, that's what they applied for and they're asking for that to remain. It's not really a waiver of the access, so I don't really know.
Waiver for the lighting plan.
But I mean, we're, Jim's concern is also the compliance of the existing openings. So I don't know, are you asking for him to submit something saying he's asking for amendment on that as well?
He's asking, he's asking for an amended site plan.
That he did.
The driveway to be left the way it is. It can be voted up or voted down.
Okay. But he's, that's part of what, he submitted a site plan amendment.
Right.
And it's part of it.
So the board will either accuse to accept the amended site plan.
Okay.
As presented, or deny the request for the amended site plan and enforce the prior site plan.
Okay, so alls you need in writing is the waiver request for the lighting?
That's what we need.
Okay. All right, then that's alls they need to submit.
Well, I get, the reason I'm asking that is because I think they can get that in here so they can be on the next meeting agenda.
Oh, yeah. They could, I, they could be on the July ninth meeting. You do have a lot on.
Yeah, that's a pretty big meeting.
You have also on it, that what didn't, wasn't on this, is you do have the mill.
On what?
For a time extension request.
On July ninth?
Mm-hmm. The East Post Rentals is just a discussion. The other two are two conditional use permits, one's for a signage, that's really minor. And then a conditional use for a change of use, not doing any exterior, just interior changes.
So I, I don't see any of those issues as big hearings.
No, and the, and the, the mill is a time.
They turned into this last week.
The mill is a time extension request. The mill is a time extension request.
Right, okay. All right, well, if they can get it in, I don't, I think they can go on, I mean, do, do any other board members have an issue with this applicant can get the waiver request in to, putting them on the July ninth meeting? Tim?
I'd like to make a motion to continue this application till July ninth.
Is there a second?
Second.
Then seconded by Phil, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'm gonna call for the roll vote. Tim?
Yes.
Karen?
Jim?
Jim?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yeah.
Peter?
Yeah.
Phil?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, this matter is continued to July ninth. Thank you.
You then.
Patty, is there any other business with the board tonight?
Um, just gonna update on the revocation for the Heickel property.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so, the sheriff in Maine did serve the papers. Mr. Heickel did receive the papers for the revocation of four-four-three Mass Road, um, for the business that's been going on in the barn. He also did come in today and spoke to Joanne. He said he wasn't aware of anything going on inside the barn and he was gonna look into it. And he is going to request a hearing. He wants to be able to use the barn slash garage for residential use, not for business use. So, he will come in and request a hearing.
Barbara, is much background noise.
I asked, I just asked them to move outside, they're moving outside. So, Patty, did you just wanna repeat that?
Okay, so, he did rece, Mr. Heickel received the notice from the sheriff. He also came in today and spoke with Joanne. He is unaware that there was a business going on within the barn. He said he would like to be able to continue a use for residential use. He's gonna request the hearing on the revocation.
Tim?
So, is, is that plan in compliance with the site plan as it was issued, whenever it was issued? Is the paving all done? Is everything?
No, it's, it's.
It's not in compliance.
No, he never did, he never did the drainage, he, he's no intentions of installing the drainage.
And no intention of paving it, obviously, since it's not done? Is that, was that a statement made or is that an assumption?
The front is how it has been, there's no paving in the back.
So, he is in non-compliance with his original site plan and he, uh, doesn't know about the use in the buildings that he collects his rent from, so I guess we'll have to wait and see what he has to say.
We will.
But he did say he wasn't gonna do the drainage.
Good.
So, that's part of what was something that he.
Then his site plan is null and void, in my opinion.
All right, okay, so he'll be requesting, he'll be appealing and we'll be hearing further on that property. We are moving forward with that, at least, anything else, Patty?
Nope, that's it.
His point was the other one we're following, they're coming in with.
Has he requested a hearing from us?
He's.
Or have we revoked and, you have the right, you have thirty days to request a hearing.
Right.
That, that's what he's doing, we revoked.
And then he has thirty days before it becomes final to have a hearing before us.
Right.
And then he can appeal to a spirit court, so he has.
No, so she used the appeal at the wrong way, she, he's requesting a hearing.
He's requesting a hearing, yeah.
Sorry, I should've picked up on that.
Okay, they can't help being aware.
Well, there's a difference and you were right. All right, is there anything else, Patty?
Nope, that's it.
Do any board members have any other business? Phil has moved motion to adjourn, is there a second?
I'll take it, this is Joe.
All right, um, I'm gonna call for the roll, Tim?
Yes.
I lost my list. Jim?
Yes.
Karen?
Yeah.
Peter?
Yeah.
Phil?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Karen.
I thought I did Karen, Karen?
I did Karen.
Yeah, I did do Karen. You're already gone, you've already adjourned and I vote yes, so we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.
Okay, good night.
Thank you, Barbara.
Good night.